Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Good morning, my name is Khabna, Dr. Khabna Marie Aboua, the medical director.
Good morning, my name is Yakub Abdurazak, finance manager.
My name is Susanna Rafa Van Broek, head nursing and delivery services.
Eric Kofibobi, head pharmacy services.
Diva Inkwa Miameho, manager of policy and business development.
Okay, we are going to discuss your financial performance and Honorable Frank Aboua will handle that, please.
Thank you Chairman. VRA Health Services, you are just starting with your financial performance. In 2022, you made a loss of 40 million. And it reduced to 35 million in 2023. You still made a loss, but it's better than the previous year. You had a total income of 66 million. However, the total expenditure is 101 million. The paragraph is 676. Now, I'm seeing direct cost to be 16 million, move from 6 million to 16 million. And before I proceed, I just wanted to go to your financial position. I'm interested in the current ratio. You know, it's 0.2 to 1 in the previous year and then 0.2, then it remained the same. So you indicated or the auditors indicated that the direct cost, the component of direct cost is the drugs and consumables. And if you're having this current ratio, then technically whoever is supplying with medication and other things will be careful not to supply. Or the person will supply at an increased rate. Don't you think that your inability to meet your short-term financial obligations is contributing to the increase in your direct cost? Do you agree with me?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Chair. I'll defer to the finance manager, but before I do that, just a brief background to, I think, the losses. I think it is important to understand where the VRA Health Services came from. The VRA Health Services as a subsidiary of VRA was originally made not to be a company on its own. It was a department and somewhere in 2014, when the authority decided to restructure to focus on its core business. It decided to carve out the health services as a subsidiary with the hope that it can help generate revenues, even if in at all to cover its costs. So the company even started from a loss position. And I think it is important to make it clear because all the staff who were in the company, already in the company, were transferred into this young company. And so you could see that right from the start, that is where we started from. And over the period, what we are trying to do is try and increase our services, improve upon the revenue, and manage our cost with the hope that these losses that we started with would come down with time. And so if you look at even this account, revenues shot up by 72%, whereas the cost increased just about 24%. What we have done is to push our cost into areas where we can generate revenue. So I just want to give this background, brief background before the finance manager comes. So currently, the cost, the salaries of the staff are not paid by the VHSL, the VRA Health Services themselves. It is borne by the shareholder because this company is still young and gradually growing. So I think I'll end here and then let the finance manager deal with the issues of the current ratio. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Not just the current ratio, you are just trying to link it to the increase in direct cost, which includes the medication you buy and other consumables.
Yes, Honorable Chair, when it comes to medications, you know, for us in the health sector, these are our inputs. We buy medications and then we sell those medications. You do a markup and you sell these medications. So the more medications you buy, that will translate into revenues for you because you put a markup. And so all those things contributed to the revenue that we generated from what we generated.
I understand that perfectly. That is why we are trying to find a very good way that will help us to reduce the cost. And that's I want to know if the current ratio we have now has direct impact on your direct cost. That's what I want to know from the finance director.
Okay, thank you very much, Honorable Chair. So in dealing with our current ratio, we identified that it's currently low. But what we sort of doing is to improve upon our collections from our receivables. And that of dealing with our payables and our inventory position because once we are piling up inventory and we are not turning them around to lessen the current ratio, then we also ensure that. But there's a component of our payables that leads to our parent, which we don't have control over in terms of the salary cost. But for receivables, we improve upon our collections to deal with the current ratio. And then in terms of procurement of medications, we ensure that we also procure them from cheaper sources that will bring down the cost as rated with procurement.
So in practical terms.
Did you say the parent company takes up the staff cost?
Yes, the permanent staff cost.
The permanent staff cost?
Yes.
So the staff cost we see here is for which category of staff?
That is a portion leads to the permanent staff and then temporary staff. Currently, the hospital pays the temporary staff and the parent does payment for the permanent staff.
That is where the problem is coming from because if you make a total, a revenue of 65.9 million Ghana cedis and then your staff cost is 77.9 million Ghana cedis, that is where the problem is coming from.
Yes, and like the medical director explained.
So that if your parent company decides to take a portion of the permanent staff, maybe you should also hire or recruit staff that your revenue can equally manage, not staff that you are forced to pay over and above your revenue. Because if you spend, you raise a revenue of 65 and then you spend 77.9 million to pay your staff, you will continue to see such losses on your books.
Yes, Honorable Chair, I think exactly that. So the permanent staff that we have already have a certain conditions of service with the parent company and that one cannot be varied. So what we are doing now is how to engage staff on the VHSL so that we develop a different conditions of service. Now, it's come with labor issues, equal work, equal pay and all that. So the shareholder is actually looking at options. One of the options is to give the permanent staff as a settlement to this young company and lock them in so that there won't be anybody being employed onto the old salary scale. And then over time, attrition and people retiring, this one, the permanent staff will go down. So in fact, we actually have started something and that is why we see a bit of improvement in the loss position.
You see, the reason why I'm also interested in the direct cost of a hospital is the fact that I have some knowledge in the pharmacy business where you get your pharmaceuticals from. If I supply you medication today and I give you, say, two months to do the payment and you don't pay, obviously, when I supply you again, the price will go up. It's a common thing, everybody knows it. And looking at your current ratio, finance director, you know why we find it difficult to meet your short-term liabilities. And obviously, it will affect the direct cost. So let's work very hard to get a better current ratio so that our suppliers will just be merciful with us and give us very good payment terms that will not cause our direct cost to go up. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm done.
Honorable Minister, this has been going on for years. And when are we going to correct this thing? Because just like Madame Chair said, you collect 65 million and then you pay your workers, just workers alone, 77.9 million. So when are we going to change the mathematics in this thing?
Honorable Chair, I'm reliably informed that the board is making some considerations at the health facility. Besides that, Honorable Chair, even though the health facility, this is highly subsidized, highly subsidized their services because their target market is the staff of the VRA. So the board is considering all this such that even if the bills and their fees and everything should be revised, I believe that when that is done, it will reflect in the next year's report and this will be corrected.
Honorable Minister, I hope so because this is my third term being on public accounts committee. And every year is the same song and dance. It's gone on all these years and they come and tell us the board is going to do something about it. I don't know if they are walking to the board meeting or what, but three terms on this committee and I hear the same story. I hope this time we'll reset the board and we'll make sure that the hospital is reset also.
Honorable Minister, you know, just like government does to Christian Health Association of the Chad Hospitals, government takes the staff costs and then they run the others. So it is something the board can decide to agree on this and take off the staff cost from their books. And then they can handle the others. In this way, if you do that and they don't make profit, then you know that it is not about the staff. But I think they should look into that, just like government does. Government takes out the staff costs on all Christian Health Hospitals and the revenues that they raise, they allow them to use it to run the hospitals. I think it should be seen in that light and maybe we will put it in our reports that the board should consider moving in that direction so that the staff cost can be picked off their books and let's see. But I know that with this, we can see some progress in terms of their profit or loss position. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, we have well noted it.
Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph 685 and Honorable Electrum will take care of that one.
Predictable food price.
So you have refused to retrieve an amount of 24,67391 from corporate clients, depriving the hospital from buying medicines, medical equipments, consumables, et cetera. Can you tell us why you refuse to retrieve these monies?
Yes, Honorable Chair, refuse to retrieve this money is quite a strong word. But I would defer to the finance manager, we've done some work on that, so thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, Honorable Chair. So I think we acknowledge that at the end of 2023, there was an outstanding amount of 24,67391.
The world in 2022 became in 2025 the best performing currency globally. Inflation dropped from the high of 54.1% to 13.7%. And our gross international reserves from what the governor has said now exceeds 12 billion US dollars. And our gross international reserves from what the governor has said now exceeds 12 billion US dollars. Slowly, but surely to our people. Confidence is returning to the markets to invest. And so the trust in the city will not sustain itself. Confidence must be maintained with sound decisions, transparent actions and accountable policies. What I mean, ladies and gentlemen, is that we must now protect what we have rebuilt through actions from governments, institutions and citizens. Government must lead by example and commit to real fiscal discipline. No more reckless borrowing or surging deficits that pass today's problems to tomorrow's generations. We must anchor public finances in realistic revenue plans, efficient spending and long-term planning. Let every loan be tied to a return and every city spent to a corresponding value. High to a return. Furthermore, we must protect the independence of the central bank. The Bank of Ghana must remain a steward of stability. We must uphold the tender, the legal tender status of the city.
Can you kindly confirm what he just said, the figures he's put up?
They must be able to transact in CDs.
Honorable Chair, we are unable to confirm that because
Let me acknowledge the role
The documents to support that.
Honorable Chair.
Do you have?
Okay, so before, just to add to it, I want with the outstanding debt, we are informed that most of it actually is a historical debt before even the company was registered. From each departmental road, they rode over up to now. So the truth is that they are pursuing some of them that are current and are collectible. Those that are uncollectible per their explanation, the board would have to consider and come up with a policy, come out with a strategy either to write it off. So I would actually request that they provide the list of the bills which are collectible. And some, those which are not collectible, if they are able to separate the two so that we are clear on which ones we can. Because from the report they gave, some are truly, it's not possible they can, they can collect it. But it takes the board to actually come up with them to write it off. We cannot write it off. So if they will be able to report to us on that, we will also be able to table it to the committee. Thank you.
Honorable Minister, the gentleman said they have collected over 12 million. Isn't that what you said?
Honorable Chair, yes.
What evidence do you have that you've collected over 12 million?
Okay, yes, 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 sir. So Honorable Chair. So Honorable Chair, the bank statements of what we had collected are all here. Last year, as you said, the bad debt was taken to the board and the board
Sir, with all due respect, I want to finish with him because he said he's collected over 12 million. Where is the evidence? And why didn't you give that evidence to the auditors? Was it this company?
The ECD will modernize our payment systems and ensure that even in a cashless future, the CD retains its importance. That said, as we embrace financial innovation, we must equally adopt digital inclusion.
All right. VRA, you are discharged. Now let's go to Gridco. Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Honorable Chair, my name is Engineer Mark Ban, I'm the acting chief executive.
Honorable Chair, my name is Richardin Tim, Director, Internal Audit.
Honorable Chair, my name is Samuel Inkansa, I'm the acting deputy chief executive.
Honorable Chair, I'm Samuel Kowakwa, Acting Director, Corporate Strategy.
Let's look at your management issues and it will be on paragraph 406 and Honorable Jassau would take care of them.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. I think this infraction is actually a management issue bordering on sustainability reporting. The auditors have made some establishments and expect you to be able to take some steps. Can you apprise us of what you have done regarding sustainability reporting that the auditors raised?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Indeed, what was picked, that is what had pertained. However, going forward, we have ensured that we correct this. Indeed, finally, we have a sustainability policy currently in Gridco and which was put into operation on May 9th this year. So currently, we have an ESG policy and going forward, we'll be including reporting on sustainability in our report. And so for the first time in 2025, we'll be doing that.
So Honorable Chair, I'm very interested in what are the elements of this sustainability unit? What do you regard as sustainability issues and how are you operationalizing them? Particularly on this new policy that you launched on May 9th.
Thank you. So I'll lay the director in charge to respond to that, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. So our sustainability policy has three main pillars. We are looking at environmental stewardship, we are looking at social responsibility and then deepening governance and accountability. And so for us as a great company, in areas where we clear our right of way, we are looking at land reclamation. We are looking at making sure that there is joint use of our right of way for other economically sustainable practices and also providing reasonable reporting on sustainability and compliance to our board for enhanced decision-making. So these are the main objectives of our sustainability policy among others.
So do you have anything like planting trees in alternative lands from where your grid lines pass? What, do you have some specific that we can relate to?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we do. We have collaborated with the forestry commission to determine certain species of trees that don't have very high clearance, that possibly can cause inductions on our right of way. So we'll be planting these trees to dot our right of way so that we will still be greening our right of way instead of making them bare.
Have you embarked on any so far this year and where? What kind of, what number of seedlings are we talking about?
Honorable Chair, we'll provide those details to the committee later. We have a land management department that is taxed to ensure that this is carried out. And this has been started in some of our operational areas, especially those, the forested areas. So we can get those reports to the committee.
Honorable Chair, I, yes, Naseem, in concert. So Honorable Chair, I would defer to you, but I will be very interested in what they are able to provide to the committee. I've never heard that they've done anything like this. So I'll be interested in knowing further what they have done because I see that their work really clears a lot of vegetation. And so if they have a measure in place, a sustainability measure in place, that's positive. But we want it operationalized on the ground.
How soon are we going to get a report?
So, thank you, Honorable Chair, Chairman. So we just started in May this year and so we are in November, we should be able to submit a report on new ways we are managing. In fact, it is good for us by end of November, by end of November.
Sir, today is the 28th of October.
Yes.
Why the end of November?
So I'm just appealing that within one month, we'll give the report to the committee.
Okay, 30 days.
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Starting from today.
I understand that.
All right, Honorable Abnasa will take care of the financials.
Thank you very much. You know, everybody has heard a lot about Gridco, Gridco, Gridco. To the average Ghanaian, what is Gridco and what does Gridco do?
In one word transmission. So Gridco, we are in the middle, we don't own the power. We facilitate the transactions between the generators and the bulk customers. So when we talk of a bulk customer, ECG for instance, is a bulk customer. So it's Netco or AngloGold or some big industries. So we facilitate the agreements between these two sectors in the economy. The energy assumption does not belong to Gridco. We are not allowed to participate in the market, but we ensure the movement of bulk power from the wholesale suppliers to bulk customers.
You mentioned the ECG and all the others. Who do you take the power from?
So on the other side, what we call the wholesale suppliers are generators, power generators. So in Ghana, we have good old VRA and then we have also independent power producers like Asogli, Car Powership, AXA, Sand Power and the rest. And then We Power. So currently, we have, we have about 10 generating companies in Ghana aside VRA. Yeah, so that is how the system works.
So when the light goes off, where do you come in to fix it?
So
If it's a transmission problem or what, I mean, just share with us some of these things.
So thank you very much, Honorable. So to the point where you receive power at your home, so in your offices, the power is coming from the generators which are scattered across the country. We have good old Akosomo, those in the Takradie enclave, the Tema enclave, and now we have even Kumasi enclave. Between that generator and your ECG or your light, any challenge at any point can affect your power. So if you have a transformer somewhere in your neighborhood and your transformer is faulted, then you may have to call ECG. Now, if there is a challenge in the network, what we call the National Interconnected Transmission System, if there is a challenge there, then.
All those sitting here is for all of us, so that we get to know exactly what happened. And even those who came with them, I'm sure sometimes you don't even know what really goes on when there's lights on. So let's pay attention and listen.
So thank you. So if there's a challenge high up there in the National Interconnected Transmission System, then it is possible to have widespread outages. Okay, so that is where we come in to resolve. So for instance, I think yesterday there was an incident in Sugakope and we did an announcement because one of our transmission lines leading to Sugakope was faulted. So it's, it's, and it supplied power to E C G to that part of the Volta region. So we had to come in to resolve that. It wasn't an E C G problem, it was a Gridco problem. And we are also operators of the power system. It means that we tell what generator should come online and what should go off and where the power should go. We, we are in the middle managing that. So if there are issues, we are responsible to handle it. Sometimes there are issues, for instance, maybe the gas people will tell us that we have an issue with gas, so we can't have enough generation in, in the West. Then we have to scramble to find generation in the East to help, to manage how to supply Ghanaian. So that is the role we play in the power sector.
And you, you play a very important role. And I look at your, your finances and looking at the huge role you play. Maybe you, you, you need to be assisted more because I'm thinking of what you do. I look at E C G's balance sheet, I look at, sorry, financial position and financial performance. And I look at yours and I feel, Minister, you, you need to help them.
Honorable, do you want to say something? We, we need help.
No, after sharing with us what they actually do, I'm looking at their non-current assets. I'm looking at their liabilities. I'm looking, looking at all these things and the important role they play. I'm sure they, they have a strategy in the pipeline, they have some plan of action in the pipeline. I'm only asking that you consider them favorably and, and support them in that regard. I can see that, yes, they, they have done quite well to improve upon their current ratio from zero point six is to one to zero point nine, but there's more room for improvement. And so I believe that if for any reason you are owed some liabilities and you should be able to collect them to help improve on your, on your current ratio. And so Minister, what we can say is I think you should help them, you should support them because they play a very important role in the transmission of the most, one of the most important things that we need as a country, getting the lights on. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable Chair. The ministry is really helping them. They, they can actually attest to the improvement in the cash water for what they are getting. Beyond that, I think with the government's policy and the government programs coming up, they are well featured in there. So they, they are well catered for.
All right, thank you.
I hope that is the case, Mr. CEO. Don't answer, don't mind me.
Uh, Gridco, you are discharged. Now let's call our boss. Could you please introduce yourself to the committee, please?
Let me make a disclosure here. Eric was, I think, a year ahead of me in, in the university. So I mean, I need to disclose that, yes. So we are very good friends, Eric and I.
Good morning, Mr. Chairperson. My name is Edmund Aqua, head of audit, bust.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Abu Akaria Lee, manager transmission.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Apetji Awono, managing director for bust. But I tell you, you've exposed my secret weapon for this quite.
Yo. Uh, we'll look at, the first one that we'll look at is at paragraph two thirty one. And honorable Simon will take care of that one, please. Uh, yours, uh, two, two, one, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Bust. I'm looking at twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two. Your profits have declined so much from, I mean, let me just say by, by forty four, forty three point four percent. Is there any reason why there was such a huge decline in profit as net profit?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say it was primarily due to, in twenty twenty two, trade was on an L C basis. And in twenty twenty three, there was an introduction of the Go For Oil program, which trade shifted to a different structure, which improved in the volumes that were imported. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. You seem to have a huge difference between your current assets and your current liabilities. Your working capital and your ratio, zero point seven point one, a decline from zero point eight point one. Are you struggling? Are you struggling with, in terms of working capital?
No.
All right. Mr. Chairman. You have acquired plants and equipment from your, from your, your, what the statement here, has that led to an increase in your productivity so far?
Yes, sir, we are more efficient.
Should we be looking forward to more profit in the next year?
Yes, sir, that's our target. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is on paragraph two thirty seven, and honorable O P K is taking care of that.
Thank you. It has to do with some encroachment activities on your B two, P three right of way. And the audit report knows that after inspection of your Bogatanga Bupi pipelines, and this measures about twelve meters wide and two hundred and sixty one kilometer in length, that a number of developers have built structures and fences on the section of the right way, which could affect the operations along these lines. And I don't know if you've seen the report, you see images of that from the audit service. This exposes your company to possible risk, which could affect the integrity of the pipeline. The auditors are recommending that you take steps to regain the encroach areas. What have you done about this, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the issue of the right of way has been resolved with fully secured the right of way on the B two, B three, and the auditors can confirm. Thank you.
Auditors are able to confirm or otherwise.
Yes, honorable Chair, verification indicated that they have secured.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That will be all for me, Chair.
Thank you. The next infraction is on paragraph two, two, four to two, 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 four, four to two, four, eight. That will be done by honorable Nakoyo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So they are preventive mechanisms, which is to put in place to eliminate thefts, loss, wastage and misuse of assets per section fifty two subsection one of the P F M acts, which this is enshrined in the principal spending officer. From what we have here, it's been noticed that bust procured some flow meters. So one flow meter, so one flow meters, two for repair jetty, two for Akosombo. Then with meters, three meters for the old discharged bay in Kumasi. And the level monitoring devices, three of them also for the old discharged bay in Kumasi. Now, I realize that although these meters have been procured by busts, they are not being put to use. Can you please explain to the committee why they are not being put to use? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, they have been complemented by a specific type of hose, which we've had some in stock at a different location. So we've mobilized them from Akosombo. We've mobilized them to the required location where it needs to be installed. And we're in the process of installing them so we can commence usage. So it's, it's underway of being resolved without incurred additional cost. Thank you.
Okay, so the unconventional methods, such as top halves method and loading and discharging volumes of products are still being used. Is that right?
No, ma'am. No.
So do you often buy flow meters or the meters in excess of what you need per a particular season?
Yes, we do, we do stock them. We do stock them.
Can you explain to the committee the reason for that?
It's spares and everyday usage. So in issues of winter, we cannot afford to have downtime for, at any point in time because of energy security and the mandate that bust has. So in everything we do, we hope we have a maintenance aspect of it. And as part of the maintenance aspect, we make sure there are enough spares available.
So the Ghana Standards Authority have been paid to do calibration. How far with that process?
It's completed, please. It's done, ma'am.
Thank you, that will be all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, your infrash, the next infrash is on paragraph two, five, eight to two, six, six. It's basically about absence of supervisor and coordinator for the bust. Yeah, two. Okay, sorry. Uh, the next infrash is on paragraph two, four, nine to two, five, seven. That will be done by Dr. Jassal.
Okay, thank you so much, Chair. This has to do with delayed projects. And these projects, about five of them, and they are treated as investments. And there's a specific requirement under our law on investment projects. Honorable Chair, I want to find out whether these projects in the first place are within approved budget. Are they?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, great. Now you also single sourced some of them. Did you get P P A approval?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, now could you now tell us why the delay in completion of these projects? As you know, the delay leads to several things, increasing costs, contractual litigations, and in the end, maybe likely to increase the overall cost of these projects whose budget you've already allocated. Could you tell us why this delay in completion of the projects and what is being done in response to the query raised by the auditors?
Thank you, Chairman. The delay was due to adjustments in the, in the scoping of the projects and timelines. But I'm happy to confirm that most of them are already back on track and contractors are back on site for completion. The first one with the Bogga depot will be completed by end of December twenty twenty five. The second one for the A P D shed by is completed and is ready to be handed over by the end of this month, which is next week. And then also the Rascal Park fence wall is also completed and will be handed over next week. In terms of the Tigres fire tenders, we did the factory assessment test last week in Brussels. We just returned and then we're happy to announce that everything checks out. And even, they've even did more than was in the scope for the fire tenders. We did inspection with the Ghana Fire Service and everybody's happy with that assessment. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, so honorable Chair, I just want to find out, it appears the M D has given us a lot of good progress with these, but auditors, are, are, are auditors in the know, do you know about this good progress he's announcing?
As I listen, honorable Chair, we are aware of, for instance, the, the second one has been construction of two sheds on the paint platform and demolition of old. Yes, that has been completed. So one out of the six has been completed. But massive progress have been made on the other projects that he mentioned. In our subsequent audit, we'll confirm whether these projects have been actually completed. But we know that pair verification that some progress have been made in, in all of these projects. One has been completed, actually. Thank you.
Thank you very much, honorable Chair, that will be all.
Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph two, fifty eight, and honorable Gappel will take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is about absence of maintenance supervisors, which is affecting quality of work at the bust. And then auditors recommend that you assign or make sure by November you get supervisors. I want to know the status of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to announce that the coordinators have been appointed in all the terminals across the country, in the southern zone, central zone and northern zone. And we've also hired a maintenance manager that supervises and oversees all operations in regards to maintenance. Thank you.
All of them at bust.
Yes, Chairman.
Okay.
Okay, the next infection is on paragraph two, six. Okay, uh, the next infraction is on paragraph two-six-six, and Honorable Kenny will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this is about leakage. The auditor general noted that section of your tap pipelines, which runs from Akra Place Depot through Akosombo and Bupé Jeti to the Bupé Market area, got damaged, causing leakage during discharge of products. This also caused increase in discharge time for transfer of products to Bupé Depot. Auditor General recommended that management should take steps to repair this pipeline to ensure operational efficiency. Management did indicate that procurement process has been initiated. And we are following up to know whether it's been fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Repair works on the line, uh, but we do need to do more works on the line. So we've initiated processes with the necessary agencies like the regulator, the public, like with the regulator, the Public Procurement Authority. We've also, the budget has also been approved for us to work on the entire line. So that is ongoing as we speak.
Are there measures put in place to detect leakage that occurs far off from town?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We are also working to improve on those measures by introducing a more robust SCADA system. We also working with national security on surveillance monitoring for the entire line to help us detect encroachment that our systems may not detect quickly. Thank you.
How much actually did the leakage cost Bost?
Mr. Chairman, there wasn't much, but we can provide you with the necessary details for assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's currently in use. It's currently in use.
Has it been fixed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's currently in use. We've, we've fixed the line. We're actually working to make it better by the current.
Auditors, can you confirm that the pipeline has been fixed?
No, it, it has not been fixed. I think earlier on indicated that they have, um, um, included it in their budgets, and so they are expecting to, um, work on it subsequently.
Don't do guys, have you seen the pictures of the pipeline? It's so dangerous and you have something like a plywood on it.
Mr. Chairman, so the budgetary approval we've gotten is to actually replace it entirely. But currently, we've actually fixed it and that is what we use.
But how long has this been defective?
It's been defective for a while, but currently the maintenance team has fixed it. So we actually use it today. But the budgetary approval we've gotten is to replace the entire line, which we have plans of doing.
So how long has this pump been, I mean, been down?
It's not down. It's not down. It's currently used.
How long has it been defective?
It's current, today it's not defective. We use it today.
How long before?
How long was it defective?
Mr. Chairman, we cannot give a specific timeframe.
You cannot give a specific time?
But from the time that we detected it and we repaired it and we realized that, no, we have to replace the entire line. We put, we followed the process.
But the auditor saw it.
The auditors saw it.
When did they see it?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three?
You've not seen the repair work? Okay. The auditors have not seen the repair work.
They haven't seen the repair work.
It's currently in use and there's no leakage, Mr. Chairman.
But the, the pictures that we see in the book, they look awful.
They do. That's the, that's the very first pictures. Pre-repair.
Thank you very much, Sir. Um, Sir, I just want to find out from you, how many depots do you have and whether they are up and running, the operational?
We have seven. Uh, one is down because it's going through, uh, maintenance, update, upgrade maintenance. So that is the Mame Water Depot. Apart from that, the APD in Akra Place Depot is working, uh, Akosombo Depot is working, uh, Bupé Depot is working. Bogga, it was also down for maintenance and is almost completed to help serve the Sahelia market. The Kumasi Depot is also working. That, we don't, we don't want that.
Mame Water, Akra, Akosombo, Bupé, Bogga, and?
And, uh, Kumasi.
En Kumasi.
We have a terminal in South Vilego, but it's not a depot, it's a booster station, and it's also working.
It's also working?
Yes, ma'am.
So when will the maintenance at Mame Water be completed?
By the end of the year, ma'am.
By the end of the year? Where exactly is this depot located?
Uh, it's in the Akosombo area.
Akosombo area, in addition to the one you have. So you have two.
We have two. Yes, ma'am. So Mame Water is sort of the main depot and Akosombo is the transitional point.
Honorable Chair, Mame Water is the, the depot, the tanks you see when you're going to Japon, to your left.
Why that name? Isn't that interesting?
But, Chair, everybody asks that same question.
Thank you.
Okay, Bost, you are discharged.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the next one to call is National Petroleum Authority. Is NPA here? Okay, I just, oh, because I didn't say NPA, I said National Petroleum Authority. Can you introduce yourself to the committee, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Sheila Ado, Acting Deputy CEO of National Petroleum Authority.
Mr. Chair, my name is Aiza Karia, Director Finance, NPA.
Mr. Chair, my name is Michael Enki, Head Budget.
Where, where is your, um, CEO? Honorable Chair, the CEO is also out of the country. Almost all the petroleum, uh, heads are having a meeting outside the country. So GMPC, um, and then NPA, the chief executives are out of the country. Okay, uh, let's look at your financial performance. Here's just one over here, um. The next exchange income, why did it go down that low? What happened? What is your net exchange income and how come it's low?
Mr. Chair, it is as a result of the depreciating CD in twenty-twenty-three. Some of our revenue lines are denominated in dollars. So we, we, we lost on, on the, due to, we had exchange losses as a result of the depreciating CD.
Madame?
No, our expenses.
You said as a result of the depreciating, why, did, you said some of your revenue, um, were in USD?
Yes, madam.
And if you, if you are-
Expenditure.
You expenditure rather?
Yes, please.
What kind of expenditure do you quote in, um, dollars?
The, we have, uh, sorry. Madame, the, this is a comparative, uh, distant comparing twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. And the interest-
So I'm only asking,
Yes.
what kind of expenditure do you denominate in dollars? You said yes, you had someone say, what kind of expenditure and the NPA is in USD? Because of, um, the losses you, you, you said you incurred as a result of the CD depreciating?
We have a, a dollar, uh, account with our operating bank and-
What kind of expenditure? Because you said you made payments and I'm saying what kind of expenditure do you make in USD?
We had, um, uh, the, the expend, we have expenditures in USD, but that will not come into the income surplus account. As at, in twenty-twenty-three, we were constructing our head office building, that was dollar-denominated. So in making the payments, we convert the dollar to CD in order to pay to the contractor. So the CD equivalent gave us some losses.
Making payments from CD, from, from dollar to CD?
To CD, yes, please.
And if the CD you said was depreciating, you should get more CDs?
No, we paid more CDs for the same dollar equivalent.
You said you have a dollar account and that you made payments from the dollar accounts?
No, but, madam.
Madam, just take your time and-
Honorable Chair, um, I think, um, the explanation is, one, they have some revenues, dollar-denominated. When the CD depreciates, they get more. But for their expenditure, when the CD depreciates, they spend more. And one of the expenditure was the head office, which was dollar-denominated. So with the depreciation of the CD, what they have budgeted for? If they have a budgeted, maybe a CD to dollar eleven CDs, and at the point of payment, it has depreciated and it's, um, sixteen CDs. It means that they are paying five CDs more, and this is why the expenditure went up. So when costs, when the dollar, uh, CD depreciates, it makes costs go up. But for revenue, you rather you get more. Thank you.
Honorable Minister, what we are talking about is, um, net exchange in income. So receipts coming in.
So it is, so per their system, net exchange income is, is because they have always assumed that at the end of the day, the exchange should rather give them an income. But in this case, because expenditure went up, they are going to make a loss instead of a gain. So this is the balance.
Yes.
So it is hard to term it. In some cases, when you anticipate, I'm not speaking on this, I must actually speaking as an accountant, in this, in this instance, I want to. And this, it depends on how you capture it. Even your account, you always have assumed that you make exchange gains, then you assume it as your income, other income. But this one, they have assumed as gain almost every time. But this time round, because of the losses they made, it becomes a loss or rather reduces as compared to the previous year. So that is the explanation I want to give.
Madame?
Yes, yes, madam. Madame Chair. Yes, Madame Chair. Yes.
The, the, does the minister, uh, work at the NPA?
He doesn't. And then to add, to give more detail to what-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm coming.
Yes, yes, madam. He doesn't work with NPA.
He doesn't work with the NPA?
Yes, madam.
So, um, what he's told us explains the net exchange income?
Yes, madam.
Oh, madam, and, uh, you just confirmed that there were payments?
Yes, madam. Yes, madam. The, can I add something?
Okay, let me, let me come in. I'm not a madam, but let me come in here. There is a sharp, there was an increase from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three on administrative expense. What caused this huge increase of thirty-nine percent?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the administrative expense was a, as a result of our expansion into all the ten regional locations of the country. Initially, NPA operations were zonalized, so we had four zones. But in twenty-twenty-two, management decided to have more visibility in the regional offices. And for that matter, opened regional offices in all the nine, ten old, nine old locations. And for that matter, this had to do with increased staff, logistics, and other things that were to enable them work efficiently.
Now, let's look at your financial position over here. Uh, there was a, the non-current assets, an increase of ninety-seven percent. What caused that?
Uh, that was, uh, addition to our assets, asset that was under construction. Yes, because the head office building started in twenty-twenty-two. And as of twenty-twenty-three, a significant component of the contractor's fee had been paid. So it added to our assets, non-current assets.
Uh, auditors, I have to call you in here about the net exchange income. That has a negative number over here. Uh, people are watching us and we need to have an explanation for the country. What, what is going on here? If you could come in?
Honorable Chair, maybe before I come in, I need to give a caveat. I would have wished we had the detailed financial statement here to really, um, see what is accounting for that. But we are having it under income. What it presupposes is that in twenty-twenty-two, um, we are having income here because the dollar strengthened against the CD. So that is an income. But where you have the CD appreciating, if we have the CD appreciating, then that, that becomes a disadvantage to the entity. So it becomes a negative figure. That is why we are having it under the income side.
Yes, but then it shouldn't be here, then it should be on the expenditure.
Yes, we could have just indicated it in the expenditure column.
It shouldn't be here, it should be on the expenditure. Okay, um, thanks for, um, that acknowledgement, that the finance net exchange income should have come under expenditure as net exchange losses. Yeah. If that is the explanation we want to take from here, then it should have come under expenditure as net exchange losses. Yes, thank you. Madame, you had the whole time to look at this report and make the necessary changes. So, uh, moving forward, let's spend time to look at what we have been cited for so that when we come here, we are in a position to explain and explain properly. Thank you.
Yes, Madame Chair. Thank you.
NPA, you are discharged. Let's call energy, um, Energy Fund. Could you, uh, introduce yourselves to the committee, please?
Please, I'm Ekwe Ousiose, Assistant Manager.
My name is Sissili Agbenyiga, Deputy Director, Legal, Energy Commission.
Gilbert Hamon, Director, Finance and Administration.
Eunice Brichum, I'm the Acting Executive Secretary. Engineer, Eunice Brichum, Acting Executive Secretary of the Energy Commission.
I am Tony Blebo, Director for Electricity and Natural Gas, Energy Commission.
Uh, okay, so Energy Fund, your financials will be on paragraph three eight-one. And Honorable Frank Iabua will take care of that one.
All right, thank you Chairman. Energy Fund. Let's first look at your financial performance. In fact, in twenty twenty-two, I'm very sure you were dancing when you made a profit of, or surplus of fifteen point eight million. However, the music changed in twenty twenty-three, when you made a deficit or a loss of ten point two million. I'm not going to ask you why. Let's go through, uh, the financial performance. If you look at promotion of energy efficiency and pro- productive use of electricity and natural gas, you expended nine point seven million in twenty twenty-two. However, in twenty twenty-three, you spent seven point four million. Is it a case that you've, you've, the, the scope, you, you're no longer interested in, in the promotion of, uh, energy efficiency or what? Have you reduced the scope or what? It's good to have your expenditure coming down, but, uh, but on, on this occasion, uh, we need to explain why. Why you are reducing, uh, allocation, uh, to that important, um, role.
Uh, Mr. Chair, in twenty twenty-three, we did conduct the same promotional activities, but we did it more efficiently than we had done it in twenty twenty-two, hence the reduction in the costs for twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
You just said that, uh, you did, I don't want to, I don't want to, I mean, I just want to see that I got, I got it right. You said in twenty twenty-three, you did the same exercise, but in a very, very efficient way. Is that what you said?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And you being efficient will mean that you make a loss in the same year. You are talking about efficiency in twenty twenty-three, yet you made, you made a loss of ten million or a deficit of ten million in the same year.
Mr. Chair, um, the question was about the reduction in the cost of our promotional activities.
So that efficiency was just in relation to the promotion, not the general account?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, so you know how to be efficient in one breath, but you can, you cannot be efficient in other, other sectors? Is that the case?
Mr. Chair, there is an explanation for the other relevant, relevant expenditure, I'm sorry, and which went up, which resulted in, uh, the overall loss for twenty twenty-three.
No problem.
Thank you.
Let's go to promotion, promotion of projects for the development of and utilization of renewable energy resources. I'm sure this is a very topical issue. It's, it's something that is everybody will be interested in. You expended nine million in twenty twenty-two, but only three point two million in twenty twenty-three. We are all interested in using our solar panels and the rest of it. But your expenditure went down from, uh, nine point two, to, to three point three million. Why?
Mr. Chair, there were some promotional activities that the Energy Commission undertook in twenty twenty-two, which was self-funded. Um, but we, we could not continue that, um, the following year. So that was why the expenditures, uh, went down. We had a program in place to help incentivize the, the solar market in that year.
Okay, I don't want to be, I don't want to be seen to be worrying you, but, uh, we are interested in the energy conservation and the rest of it. So I will just, uh, move to other relevant expenditure. That moved, that moved from twenty-six million to fifty-five million. And I'm sure that is part, but, but part of the reasons why you made a loss. That will be my last question, if it's answered the way I want it.
Okay, Chair, so I'll take this question. The Energy Fund, um, performs as a bank account for Energy Commission. So the Energy Fund collates all the revenues and is being transferred and utilized in Energy Commission. So these thematic areas were, um, stipulated by the act. So all other activities were accumulated into the other relevant expenditure. So the other, other relevant expenditure comprises of compensation, our CapEx that we, we procured, and then some investments that we did during the financial year. And then also, we had an impact of impairment loss of eighteen point nine million, which resulted in the loss of the ten point two million, Yasi. Thank you.
Impairment loss is on a separate line. We're talking about the fifty-five million. The other relevant expenditure, you are mentioning impairment loss.
Yes.
Which has its own line, as a line item. So why are you mentioning impairment loss, uh, in, uh, under other relevant expenditure? Because it has its own line.
Yes, I, I finished with it and I added it, so, yes.
Anyway, Chairman, thank you.
Energy Fund, you are discharged. Now let's have Energy Commission.
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Energy Commission. The Energy Fund is, um, is the fund that, um, helps to fund our activities.
Okay, so now that you are sitting down there. Now-
Madam, if the fund that is set up to help Energy Commission is making losses, then, uh, wh- where is the hope that truly we have something working for us? Because you said the fund is the commission's bank accounts. That was what you said. And so that if you are making losses, then, um-
Okay, so this was impacted by the impairment loss. That is not-
What, what caused that huge impairment, please?
Okay, so these are receivables that we expect to get from our utilities, uh, the public utilities, which we are not paying. And somewhere over five years, so we had to, we realized that the carrying amount was not equal to the recovery amount, so we had to impair it. But we are making steps in collecting this, that's fine.
Auditors, can they just, um, impair, uh, amount, uh, debts or owing's because they have realized that there's no way they can retrieve them? Can they just, um, get up and, right, hit their accounts with that?
Honorable Chair, we need approval from Parliament. It's only Parliament that can write off government debts.
So then you have to reinstate it and follow due process? Or the Energy Fund in your, in the act, it says you on your own can go ahead and impair. Is this not public funds?
Yes.
Is it public funds?
Yes.
Is this public funds, please? If it's public funds, then there's a process for impairing these things. Other statutory bodies have come the same way. They followed through the process and they have taken, written off some of, um, these impaired amounts from their books. So on your own, you cannot write to, just charge it to, um, your account, but you have to follow due process. That's why I confirmed with the auditors. You are shaking your head, maybe that is not it. So please share with us what you think.
Sorry, um, Chair, um, this wasn't a write-off, it's an impairment. It's just a provision for you to work on and recover. What the auditors, so the auditors themselves did additional impairment for us. After we did a minor impairment, they increased it. So this is, this is just a provision to help you recover the funds, but not a complete write-off of the amount.
So that if tomorrow they pay, will you reinstate that part that has been paid?
Yes, please. Yes, please. It comes back into the financial statement as a recovery.
Yeah, but then why is it, yes, why, but then it shouldn't be here, oh? Yes. Because this is not actual. You are saying that is a provision?
Yes, so-
So then why should it be on that, yes?
The debit takes the expense and the credit reduces the receivable amount.
Yes, and I'm asking, auditors, why is it on the expenditure then?
Honorable Chair, in terms of the treatment, if we are looking at it as provision, then the, the debit and credit aspect, we have to, um, the, the income and expenditure would have to be debited to reduce the income for the year. And then when you go to the, um, for the statement of financial position, it will reduce the receivable. So you will have it, you will have it under liabilities. But when you do the final analysis, it will reduce the receivable. So when you hit the provision against the receivable, receivable figure, the amount will come down. So as and when, um, the debts are collected, then the provision will be, um, reducing.
Unfortunately for us, you did not indicate the liabilities in the financial position, so. But if you have your statements of account, if you can show us where this is, I will be very grateful.
Chair, the liability was netted off the trade receivables. So if you see our current assets, you realize it has reduced.
But it, it, your current assets reduced by ten million. And what we are talking about is eighteen point nine million.
Yes. So that will be a net movement, not, um, the ten representing the impairment.
Auditors, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this treatment. And I will plead with you to go back and look at their accounts again. And, and let us know the details in the, uh, their current account, their current liabilities, and the treatment of that impairment as well. Because I'm not comfortable with the explanation and the treatment that we have in the book. Thank you.
All right, Honorable Chair, noted.
So Energy Fund, which is serving as a bank, is in areas, uh, what is the position now of Energy Fund?
We are in a positive position now.
You are in positive position?
Yes, please.
So now I can take a deep breath, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, go ahead with Energy-
You are in a reset position now.
Right.
Thank you. Um, looking at your financial position on table thirty-four, your revenue went up to fifty-three point eight percent. But your total expenditure is seventy-eight point eight. Why? Can you throw more light on that for us?
Okay, Chair, we had an impact on impairment as well in the Energy Commission, which is, uh, twenty-seven point three million. So if you check the compensation, it's around fifty-one percent, and then the goods and service is around seventeen point four percent.
Okay, so looking at your financial position, uh, look at your assets. And then, uh, twenty twenty-three, your asset, the, is up by nineteen point one percent. What accounted for that?
Okay, so if you look at, uh, uh, non-current assets, increased by four hundred and thirty-six percent, this is mainly due to some investments that were, um, done for long term, some long-term investments. And then we also procured CapEx, about eleven point seven million from, from there, that increased the asset position, coupled with increase in the cash balance.
So you claim you make investment, investment in what?
In fixed deposits. That reflects in our other income of nine point seven million.
Current ratio, when you look at twenty twenty-two is thirty-five point zero one. And then when you look at, uh, twenty twenty-three is nine point five point one. You're looking at your ratio. Looking at the two ratios in terms of liabilities, how will you, how, how will you recover?
Okay, so the current asset had a dip of about fifty-nine percent, which is mainly from the earlier explanations. So that had an impact on our current ratio. So going forward, we will not be having such issues as our current asset is quite strong now.
So you promise the committee that it won't happen again?
We'll try our best to ensure that.
Because we are going to take thi- this note down. And then next year, we are going to match with what we say. So be truthful, you have strong oath, so be truthful to the committee.
Okay, um, your management issue is on paragraph three seventy-four, and Honorable Akwesekunede will take care of that, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, this has to do with some unresolved issues with their bank reconciliations. They told the auditors that they do reconciliation of the accounts on monthly basis. But this is a twenty twenty-four account. But the auditors observed that somewhere in twenty twenty-two, you had some issues with some of your customers paying or remitting monies to you into wrong accounts. Instead of putting it into the electrical wiring account, it went into the Energy Fund account. They recommended that a reversal of this should be made. And subsequently, you do proper reconciliation of these accounts. Has that been done?
Yes, please, it's been resolved.
The issue with it is that, I'll verify that with the auditors, but the point is, once the customers pay into the wrong account, how then do you monitor the payments that they ought to do to you? Because if I'm supposed to pay to you, and I paid to you, Mr. X, instead of Mr. Y, I've not paid to you, so you still demand that I owe you. How would you know that I've paid if it went into the wrong account? And how do you chase your receivables with such unreconciled accounts that you do have?
Um, Chair, we do reconciliation at the end of every month where this comes up, and then we try to resolve it promptly.
And kindly try and do it promptly, because that is from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. It should not exist, otherwise you would have imbalances in the account and improper receivables. Auditors, can you please confirm that if this reversal has been made?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the, an amount of one hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and seventy-eight has been transferred into the Energy Fund account as of twenty fourth June twenty twenty-five.
24, okay. All right.
Honorable Chair, 2024, 24th June 2024, so, thank you.
Okay. Now, do we have Unified Petroleum Price Fund? Is that you guys?
That's NPA.
Ah, the NPA?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
National Electrification Scheme. Ministry of what?
Oh, that's you.
But that's you? You've appeared before us on this one? No, not on this one?
No, the ministry has appeared before the, okay, but then we have not received an invitation on, um, this.
Minister, sorry, an invitation has been sent. There are two reports we are looking at. The first one was the, um, public accounts on ministries, departments, and agencies. And this one is public accounts on public boards, corporations, and other statutory institutions. So some of the boards or public institutions fall under both. But we sent a letter from, um, the secretariat asking that the National Electrification Scheme attend upon the committee. There is a letter to that effect, Minister.
Okay, so, um, Honorable Chair, we have, we, um, actually, that fund, um, informed has to be responded by the Ministry of Finance. However, once you've written to us, we'll look and then appear before the committee with the needed information.
Did you say National Electrification Scheme should be responded to by?
The fund is controlled by the Ministry of Finance.
No, we are talking about the, not the UPF, UPP, no. We are talking about the National Electrification Scheme.
So, Honorable Chair, I, the invitation that we had was for the agencies. The ministry, this should be responded by the ministry. We haven't had it, but once you've indicated that it's been sent to us, we'll look at it and then appear before you in another date. Because I didn't get that invitation.
Can you, can you send, um, Minister, a copy of the letter?
Because the invitations I have didn't include a National Electrification Scheme.
For the meantime, uh, in the meantime, is Ghana Atomic Energy Commission here?
We are under Ministry of Environment.
Oh, it's under Environment. Okay, Minister, uh, we'll call ECG. Could you please introduce yourself to the committee?
My name is Yafrem Poon, Director of Materials and Transport.
Madam Chairperson, my name is Elia Takuwa, Acting Director of Procurement.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Honorable Chair. My name is Ben Dankwa, Director of Lega.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. My name is Ebony Zargani, Acting Director of Operations.
Good afternoon. My name is Mo Sisokli, Acting Director of Finance.
Honorable Chair, my name is Kwejo Ayensu Oben, Deputy MD Engineering Operations.
I'm Kwame Webana, Acting Managing Director.
Honorable Chair, my name is David Weryasamuwa, Deputy Managing Director, Commercial Services.
Honorable Chair, my name is Belinda Iabua Jamina, Director of Customer Service.
That's Almighty ECG.
Thank you very much. ECG, would like to know what constitutes your internally generated funds, please?
Basically, ECG is in the business of buying electricity and selling it to customers. So our major source of revenue is from the sale of electricity. We have other sources, like, uh, sales of forms. Those are very, very, very small, but largely, our source of revenue is from the sale of electricity.
So then it should read revenue and not internally generated funds, because you mentioned other things in addition to.
All, all right.
Then I also see, um, government grants. But, um, I, I, I want you to help me here. When you look at your income and expenditure, I see net exchange loss. Is it 8.3 billion or 8.3 million?
Yeah, that's correct, 8.3 billion.
Net exchange loss?
Yes.
What is that, please? Can you break it down for us?
Oh, thank you. So this is exchange loss on independent power producers' balances, the amount we owe them. The second one is on for...
No, I asked for the net exchange loss, which is 8.3 billion. Give me the explanation on that, please.
Madam Chair, we sell electricity at a price approved by the PRC. And in setting the price, PRC uses a certain exchange rate.
Okay.
But when we buy the power to pay for it, we use the market exchange rate, and there is usually...
When you buy the power, you use the market exchange rate?
Yes, because we...
The power is generated in Ghana?
In Ghana.
And is denominated in USD?
The power is generated in Ghana, but the contract is in USD.
Which contract is in USD, please?
All the, the power we buy from the IPPs. So soon on, as ugly, uh, sand power, even B power is in, uh, US, US dollars.
It's in USD?
It's only VRA, which is not in US dollars.
Um, so based on the directive the Minister gave this afternoon, are you going to look at it? Because the Minister of Finance this afternoon just made, um, gave a directive that, um, we should, we should price everything in U, in Ghana Cedi. So that if our local power producers are charging in USD and causing us to realize a net exchange loss of 8.3 billion Ghana Cedis, which is even more than the government grants of 6.6 billion Ghana Cedis that government gave to you to pay the IPPs, I still don't get it.
Madam Chair, uh, these are existing contracts signed between 2012 and 2016. Um, the new directive, uh, we will have to explore with our lawyers whether it has retroactive effect and whether the IPPs are willing to price in US dollars.
Not retroactive effects, because we all know that that cannot be done. But I am drawing your attention to a statement the Finance Minister made today, and that is what I'm telling you. But I still stand by that. I don't understand how come the government grants that they give to you, that they gave to you in 2023 to pay your IPPs was 6.6 billion, and yet you incurred net exchange losses of 8.3 billion? How is that? Just, just help us, you see, break it down for the average Ghanian to, to really understand. That's, that's all I'm asking you to do.
Uh, Madam Chair, unfortunately, that's the reality.
Yeah.
We buy the power in US dollars. We collect the money in Ghana Cedis. We must change from Ghana Cedis to US dollars to pay for it. The price is fixed, and the price assumes a certain exchange rate. But when we go to the market to buy, to, to pay for the power, the exchange rate is different, and that's where the loss is coming from. And it is the reality.
That is the reality. Auditors, I think you should help us also here. Look at the reality of 8.3 billion in net exchange losses alone. Maybe we should drill down and see how best, uh, we can look at this and to avoid such a huge occurrence, because clearly in 2023, it is more than what government even gave you.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I should add, I should add that, um, in 2023 and 2024, we had, uh, a lot of volatility in the exchange rate. This year, uh, from May, the Cedi appreciated, and we had gains. So I want to put that on record.
So this year, um, you're telling us that, um, we will not see a net exchange loss, um, a huge net exchange loss. But all I'm saying is that I understand what you are saying. But I'm also asking that we look into this, because, um, we end up, government, government gives you 6.6 billion to help you pay your IPPs, and you end up, in addition to the 6.6 billion, also incurring a net exchange loss of 8.3. Uh, we are not saying it is anybody's fault. All we're saying is that we should look into it further. And then also, when you come to the finance costs, um, is it 535 million Ghana Cedis? Can you confirm, please? 535 million? What, what kind of transactions, uh, go into your finance cost, please?
So we have, uh, subsidiary loans on land by the Ministry of Finance to ECG. And then we also have conventional loans that ECG contracted on its balance sheet. So the two, uh, made this number of 535.
You are saying that the finance cost has to do with payment of loans?
Yes, the accrued interest payable, or the interest payable for the year is this amount. Yes, yes.
Your finance cost, you are saying, is, uh, your loans, your accrued interest and loans?
Yes, yes.
Is it, I know you have the accounts there, can you give me a breakdown? I'm just wondering that ECG would, um, pay 535 million Ghana Cedis in finance costs for a year? You, you'll be laughing and shaking your head, but that is so much money for me, so that is why I want a breakdown of that, yes.
So, Madam Chairperson, it's indicated in the notes that, uh, interest on long-term borrowings is this much.
Sir, please, I, we don't have the notes, we only have the summarized, um, financial performance and position, so that's why I'm asking you to help us.
So I can go through the loan shadow?
Just give us one or two highlights that are close to the, the 535 million Ghana Cedis.
All right, so, Madam Chairperson, we have loans such as, uh, IDA 246...
Bright red. We're gonna say bright red.
We, ne, ka, se, bright red, eh, na, se, eh, eh, tima, bu, ah, ma, mo, da, ni, na, twe, cha, eh, de, aman, o, cra. After, so, obi, swa, sabi, ne, tu, eh, se, che, che, no, we, ni, ka, se, si, atika. O, si, atika, eh, Drua, eh, tima, bu, ah, aman, ya, o, ne, eh, che, che, ne, o, o, ni, na, eh, ti, eh, kokra, no. Eh, eh, again, Sements Vital Heba Mixa and Capsules. Eh, Druno, eh, 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 na, eh, ne, 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 bu, eh, Drui, eh, bu, eh, papa, 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 papa. Ah, eh, pheno, nitric oxide, se, nitric oxide, no, o, me, eh, ba, o, ni, pe, bi, ma, eh, inti, bi, eh, me, si, eh, inti, na, kantare. Eh, ba, be, bi, eh, ba, be, eh, o, inti, mu, ame, inti, ne, tima, da, o, mo, de, eh, me, de, eh, pu, san, eh.
Yaye biwa Winibah, yaye biwa Mankasim, yaye biwa Okobiye, Yefra bi Jangufa, yaye biwa Seketia Drobbo, North Tamale, Bimbila Yendi. Yaye biwa Bribri, yadi anese wa sa Asana Frey. Yababa bebe sidan amon, ney amon feo num, na dietretia. Sa Asana wa krahaha, wey registration five hundred cities. Enkanisca five million. Se, wobiti se Asanta Region, Eastern Region, Vota Region, registration here, seven hundred cities. And obiti se Tamale, Oti Region, Bollega, Bea, Horna, Dina, a thousand. That was Enkanisca ten million. We have registration in here, yababa be show Asana. The anti-our registration, you know. Oh, we say Asasi, be any material, say they swear you ma. Obesi dambo, na crack him, abam. Obesi dambo, boins wa plaster dan, we not dan, oh, eh, full full. Because Asasi wa Asana enti wo, Asasi wa isofra Asasin mobile, Asasi wa shopee wo, and it's not be registration. Ney akwa koshé, ney tima your quality job amon. Sir, unpano wa sa Asana here cana. Yaya estimate ni na wea, total cost of France a hundred million ya. Obetria thousand five at was here. That's initial deposit of fifteen percent of the total cost. It was twelve fifteen percent in wea, diya cano. Yey amon feo poli poli yo num. But yaya start to agumani na, bosimi be ya be tria.
Etie, sir, a dining ina estimate ni a hundred thousand, I think six a one billion na. Obetria emu fifteen percent down payment. And sa na mo be share agumadi, na say, na fifteen percent, you know, architectural planning, eh, eh, woman na.
Bebe wo. Architectural plan bebe wo to finish him. And the oteya fifteen percent na. Yaya start to agumani here, yeye koni na, bosimi be ya, to be tria, woman prepayment, you know. And the way you are near, be your agumani, is a cow four good years. Ah, yes, oh, de de, who did tria. And you know, yasi udanama, we, ama okin ya, otim. But na cow four good years, yaya was oh, de de, who did tria, the remaining one.
Mea miae bena, motu miae ye, eh, wea, nee pano eti, motu ma chere videos kakrah.
You see, Akram, no Kassano, Winibah, Akram finishing. Eh, me no Kassano, Koko Odianso, eh, almost done. But eh, man ya, Anasa Masama, district in the mono, ya complete by regular oh. Ah, you see, amon fourteen. Okobi se pun kata manswa, ama amekendu munimba, pun kata manso, biti no, ba be ye biti no. Ya wey almost so diya, eh, or ya hande ke almost itim, eh, be be ya. Etie, asa say yababase, yababwa mentin, bebe inawa, just come to the office. Na yey amon, eh, further details, and as a further explanation.
Openi ansana, yabe soroso no, asemwe eh, hu ya, eh, ashofwa pa. Eh, eh, penpe, you know, oh, some mode, eh, go for the om, eh, edine, edema, former ina ya ma. Omu you see, materials via enshada, eh, hu ya de, na cement, eh, kodaini mu. Ke Ajin Yame, building on construction limited no. Then, na obetu miae catch, oh, ah, u, u, uti almost eh, mu, mu disa agumani.
Yo, mira, sonia, wow, yes, eh, Kramobon ya miae hu Kramopa. And eh, tumla niya tre usi, and you know, and it's in ya bano, yaya agumaya, amon kwa in, blah, bebe agumano, ayaya no. Other company bua, na former bua, oh, yaya agumaman, oh, si, oh, mede mati contract in the menu, oh, debi. Asa, oh, person, the material, papa be yaya agumaman, to asimema oh. Yaya diya, yaya agumati twenty-four seven. Uh, be be na ompa, frame per info, na yasasa niya mane mane, yaya niya, wa koma so, addi ya amon. Eh, Ke Ajin Yame Building Construction, yawa inkrai. Your office, nibe be ya, aka Akrah. And also, oba brick market. Who do care for, cares you, yawa text you, yawa trot flow. Bebe ya befa, be ya, and also, also, oba Joma Market. Who do Joma Market ya, Akala Akrad, obaba eh, office. Ya number, also, eh, zero two four one, four five, zero nine, four seven. And yes, asa obetna fre, zero five five seven, two five, six nine, six six.
Eh, what's Amma, it chat wo krah, eh, the edema, eh, washofu?
Maximum chat twenty-nine, say, yani be tria Ke Ajin Yame Construction. Oben hu ya TikTok, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, baby be ya all social media. Bo Ke Ajin Yame Building Construction, na be hu ya. And yes, asa, W W dot, Ke Ajin Yame Borders dot com, and so, oben hu ya.
That is what you had, the CEO of Ke Ajin Yame Building and Construction Limited. So they are into building and construction. Um, all that they are saying is that when you have a land and you want to build your preferred property or your preferred building, probably this is a building that you've been dreaming to, to build, but the funds are not there yet. Come to them, do a few registration with them if you are in a cra. I mean, wherever you are in Ghana, they would come and build it for you anywhere, anytime, any day. And this is what you have to do. Just come, pay initial deposit of the building you want to buy. They have the architectural planning, they want to show to you. Um, you have to pay a fifteen percent down payment and your building will be built for you. This is telesale right here on ABC News. My name is Hansing.
This here na, eh, layout for Sebia, eh, the trees who from the main source, Sebia, eh, dam. Now, the distribution aba, community is no more use wa. This is the main one, eh, where trees who, eh, if you are aba, and this setup, ney, yana, yes, you share wa, I see. Ney amanaya, one, single, single, bakuba, but, eh, obiba, ney Sebia, eh, say, yaya, you see, mano, no, no, sadokwa. It's me, she share, sena ya, she seni, ya, eda man, so, kwa, ney, me agumana, eh, easy, aman.
Me who other, eh, things, eh, wa, and also, bechma, oboswa, change, kakane wo.
This is a ball valve, air valve.
Air valve.
Air valve. Mostly, ye isu oh, eh, Sebia, ye isu, eh, yaya gas line, and as Sebia water line, and as petrol line. Eh, doing this is, eh, open enclosure valve. This one, also, is at, eh, eh, water tank cars.
Okay.
When na, mo de share, eh, change, you say, who be ya, and you see, the tank, you know, aba no. Eh, Sebia, oh, yeah, lines, no, see, a governance pipe, eh, we, and no, be isu, eh, to try, eh, the airlines, no. But who try, eh, he try doa, no. When eh, machine, eh, eh, dice, eh, no, eh, the try try doa, no, no.
The size is good, be ya, eh, be, 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 ah, no.
Yes, be wa. We see, eh, pressure testing machine.
Right.
Obesni feo, we, ney, say, do, ye likedu, be be ya. We, who do work, ah, me, from the main source, now, we do see, go, na, ama pompai. And eh, pompai, eh, be be ya, eh, likedu, one, you see, we pompai up small, oh, no. Sena be, obetse, se da side, ney, peno, yaya agumano. If ya, then, say, oba, eh, betse, se da ni, na, no, and so, eh, trace the source, no.
So this is the end of breaking your building to identify where leakages are. This is the right to use.
So the pipes to, eh, yawa, more types, oh, oh. Yawa, normal ones, we mo.
Yeah.
For normal, if you, oh, bro, approves, name, barristers.
Okay.
Which means, normal ones, we mo, eh, and yawa, eh, heavy ones, we mo. Mostly for, eh, petroleum, we mo, no, eh, the share, formula, the underground, air connected, okop, filling stations, eh. Eh, layout, ney, oh, formula, oh, connect, ma, we na, full, eh, the formula, we na, isu oh.
Right, right. To be up, eh, any of these inside, they should come to where? Adum Trading Agency.
Quantity, oh, be be, eh, be ya, amon, wa, I see. Baby, oh, be ya, eh, be to me, amon, sa, what, Tamale, oh, Akar, what, Akrad, baby, oh, be ya, eh, be to me, eh, distributed, eh, be oh, oh.
Six, four thousand.
Thank you so much. So this has been ABC Telesale with Adum Trading Agency. Their numbers are below the screens. This is your one stop shop for all your plumbing work. So industries, individuals, eh, people into building. Come to Adum Trading Agency, here at Arena, right in the heart of, um, Cantamato. And get everything that you need. We'll come your way again to another shop, Katas Life.
Playing for your country, and you is you. Scoring, and you is you. Avoiding injuries, and you is you. Winning, and you is you. But you know what be easy now? Kivo four in one dairy mix. Ayay, easy. It gets everything inside, dairy, creamer, sugar, roasted granola. Just add water and sharp my shokings, make me ready. Taste and energy, made easy. I'm a match winner, but the real champion is Kivo four in one dairy mix. Champion taste.
This advert is FDA approved.
Share with the SOEs and IPPs.
Uh, Madam Chair, the power we buy. If ECG were operating hundred percent efficient, no losses, the power we buy is still higher than our revenue. The cost of the power is still higher than our revenue. So I can say that even now, that we are complying with a cash waterfall mechanism, we are not able to pay for the full cost of the power.
I can understand that. That you are, you are buying ECG higher than you are selling to us. I can understand that. But if you should use the resources for anything other than what the law stipulates, do you just do it on your own or you ask for permission?
Uh, that's exactly why we have decided full compliance with the cash waterfall mechanism. So the decision is not made by ECG whether to pay or not to pay. We are complying.
So, um, respectfully, can you tell us what the one point two nine two billion was spent on? Because you said ECG used it. So can you tell us exactly what the one point two nine two billion was spent on?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, some of them were used to pay our contractors. Some of them were used to pay for liquid fuel, buying liquid fuel for generation, uh, and, and other creditors.
Buying liquid fuel for generation?
Power generation.
But I know Ministry of Finance was also paying for liquid fuel for power generation.
Not always, ECG pays sometimes.
Yes, but Ministry of Finance also paid some.
Yes.
And so, when you are saying you used parts to buy fuel, you used parts to also do, you said something?
Pay contractors.
Pay contractors. Contractors that were on your procurement plan for the particular year?
Yes, Madam.
So then, if you have contractors that you had to pay in a particular year and you didn't have funds, you are saying, you are confirming to all and sundry that the contractors you paid were on your procurement plan for the year twenty twenty-three, yet you did not have money. But what does the law say? That you don't spend monies that you don't have. So that if you are supposed to pay contractors, as you claim that they were on your procurement plan for the year twenty twenty-three and you did not have money, why did you dip your hand into the cash waterfall mechanism? That is specifically, eh, is specifically supposed to be used to pay the IPP, IPPs and other, I mean, other firms in that space? And then you used it to pay contractors? Clearly, you have flouted the law.
Yes, Madam.
So when the auditors came, why did you not show them all the expenditure you had made on the one point two nine billion? Because the auditors are saying that they did not have a view of that. And so we should find out from management.
Uh, Madam Chair, we did. We provided the supporting evidence to them.
Auditors.
Subsequent to the audit.
Subsequent to the audits and not when they were, eh, they were there. So auditors, can you confirm whether some were used to, um, pay contractors, some were used to pay for liquid fuel, eh, and, and the other items that has been mentioned here?
Yes, Honorable Chair, when you look at their response, they indicated what they used the amount for. And subsequently, provided supporting documents to that effect.
Thank you, but it is still a breach. Mr. CEO, you agree with me? So that is why I say painfully that. Looking at all the infractions that you have been cited here for and the quantum of money involved, if we should manage the resources we have efficiently, I don't think that we should look at tariff increments, pay the arrange, the quarterly arrangements that you have put in place. You can shake your head, but the citizens of Ghana are also saying that, look at the quantum involved. If we use these monies efficiently, we can adjust and help support the difference in what you buy and how much we pay for. But quarterly increments of tariffs with all these infractions, something doesn't sit well. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, um, thank you so much. In terms of the quarterly increment, it is not necessarily quarterly increment. There is always a review based on the, um, even with IMF agreement, a review. So a review can always, can, eh, a review should be either up, down, or what it is. So I think that is what we are currently sticking to. So it's not like, eh, on a quarterly basis, automatically we have to, eh, increase. So that is what, but I think that with the...
Hotel.
No, but I'm, but I think with what you are, the inefficiencies that has been pointed out now, it is something that we have to look at critically and, and try to avoid it. Or as much as possible, we should avoid it. Uh, currently, we, in terms of the ministry, for instance, quarterly or on a monthly basis, the cash waterfall, for instance, the minister always want to ensure that not even a city is retained by ECG. And I think we should carry on with this. Most of the inefficiencies that we have actually been, eh, been pointed out to us will not be repeated. And when we do it this way, there will be a quarterly review and we may even see prices going down or tariff going down. As we may, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Minister. Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph one sixty-eight and honorable... Uh, it's on paragraph one sixty-three. And Honorable Abana Osayasa will take care of that one.
Thank you. Um, there's an under declaration of revenue collected. According to the audit service, you collected revenue of eleven point five nine billion Ghana cedis. And you declared, um, eight point six three seven billion Ghana cedis. There's a difference of two point nine five billion Ghana cedis that you failed to declare. So you see what I'm talking about? CEO, a difference of two point nine five three billion, that was not declared, even though that was collected and per regulations, forty-seven of the PFM regulations, um, you have fallen foul of the law by failing to disclose. Please tell us, um, the current status of this undeclared amount of two point nine billion Ghana cedis.
Uh, uh, Madam Chair, we, we have tried to respond to that. We under-declared and we, we don't justify that. Uh, we have corrected, um, that action. So right now, all our collections are transparent. Uh, in fact, uh, Madam Chair, my, all my collections go into an account that is monitored by the CEO of PURC and Minister for Energy and Green Transition. So there's no way we can hide our collections anymore.
So, um, CEO, the under-declared revenue of almost three billion and the under-paid revenue of almost one point three billion, that alone gives us four point three billion Ghana cedis. Four point three billion Ghana cedis. Minister, I pray and hope that moving forward, as you said, the right thing is being done. But that notwithstanding, the two point nine billion, what was it used for? And whatever it was used for, have you shown it to the auditors and have the auditors, um, cleared you of this infraction? The two point nine, almost three billion Ghana cedis that was not paid?
Uh, we have provided evidence to the auditors, uh, what it was used for. Um, most of it is for projects, um, for loss reduction and, and also, um, again, for fuel, um, and meters, energy meters we, we bought. So that's what it was used for.
Said, most of them were for projects?
For projects.
What kind of projects, please?
Um, building some stations and also buying, uh, meters to install, to replace obsolete ones.
All these were in your procurement plans for twenty twenty-three?
Uh, Madam, we exceeded the procurement plan.
Um, Chairman, for this sitting, I'll need you to rule on this, um, before we move to the next one. Thank you.
Uh, it's a procurement violation. And, uh, even though the auditors did not recommend, um... Any sanctions. You're already going to see the Attorney General, so we'll add this one to it. So those officers involved, they will have three cases to deal with it, Attorney General on it. Thank you very much, ECG. Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph one sixty-eight. And Honorable Gape would take care of that one, please. Uh, it's on part payment of procurement without the written contract agreement. Um, the, those that I'm recommending to me, the Attorney General, it is not the off, is the officers who were involved at that time of the audit. So they are the ones who are going to meet the Attorney General. Not the current ones sitting out here, who haven't done anything wrong.
Thank you very much. Uh, this infraction...
I'm sorry. The CFO. No, those who were there at that time of the audit. Oh, if they are here, oh, then they'll be part of it. They will see the Attorney General. You see, those who are involved, when the Attorney General writes to them, they, they will go, don't worry.
Yeah, this infraction referred to, eh, part payment of procurement without written contract agreement. The cost is about seventy-five million Ghana cedis. What is the status in regards to this? Uh, Madam Chair, uh, the contract has been signed. Uh, it was signed in March of twenty twenty-four.
It was signed?
In March of twenty twenty-four.
That, that was after the audit?
The od, that was before the audit, but, uh, the audit was from January twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-three. So at the time, the, there was no contract when the payment was made.
Uh, in the first place, why would you even make a payment without even contract? There is, there's no contract. Uh, this is a procurement violation and it's under section ninety-two of the Public Procurement Act two thousand and three, act six six three, as amended. The recommendation is for us to, uh, sanction you. So ECG, those who are involved, signing, um, paying seventy-five million Ghana cedis without a contract, you are going to meet the Attorney General. So, uh, clerk, have it out there. This is four infractions that they are going to meet the Attorney General. Thank you. Let's move to the next one, please. And it's paragraph one seventy-five. Honorable Akwesi Kuneudu will take care of that one.
Chairman, thank you very much. This infraction has to do with a, a single source procurement that ECG made. They made that with the argument or the excuse that they are state-owned enterprise converted into a company and therefore not subject to the PPA regulations and procurement process. That's what you told the auditors, per the audit report that we have in front of us. But the auditors disagreed with you and said, once you take tariffs sanctioned by the state as IGF, it becomes state funds and therefore you must be subject to the PPA arrangement in terms of procurement. And even with that, your own manual for procurement talks about competitive tendering and selection. To them, you did not go by any of these and you went ahead and single sourced a procurement service. And they recommend, Chairman, section ninety-two because it's a procurement infraction. And therefore, I refer to you to be part of the infractions as so directed to the Auditor General. Attorney General.
So this was a single source procurement to, was it in Hubble? Huptel Limited. And you didn't go through the procurement processes. And the recommendation is that sanctions under section ninety-two of the, uh, Public Procurement Act two thousand and three, act six six three, as amended. Should be applied to the officers involved. We also recommended that management should always adhere to the provisions in the Procurement Act stated above in all of these procurement activities. And again, auditors and clerk, you add this one to the issues they are going to answer to the Attorney General on it. This is a major violation and those involved should face the law. Thank you very much. Uh, the next one is on paragraph one eighty-two. And, uh, Honorable Day would take care of it.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this, uh, infraction, it's linked to two major things. First, source deduction of service fees done by, uh, Huptel for service rendered to ECG. And then the second one, also what we call project legacy costs inherited by ECG. Now, the issue has to do with Huptel Company providing collection services for ECG. And in the year twenty twenty-four, a total amount of ten point three four billion Ghana cedis was deemed to have been collected by Huptel for which Huptel charged a fee of a hundred and forty-eight point nine million Ghana cedis. The issue is... Twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, Chair. Thanks for the correction. 2023, I'm sorry, Chair. Thanks for the correction. And this the above condition is deemed to have affected a company's ability to independently verify the total revenue collected because Huptel deducted the amount upfront before remitting what they have collected. And this commission charges which was collected or deducted upfront may affect transparency and accountability in revenue collection and reporting. Now, the auditors made two very significant recommendations. One, that management ensures that all revenue collections are deposited in gross into a designated bank account before payments of commissions are made to the service provider. Number two, the auditors also recommended that further management was urged to ensure that Huptel Limited sends monthly billings of fees charged on revenue collections before payments are made to the service provider. Now, this is to ensure that it provides an audit trail for revenue collections. My first question is, what is the status of implementation of this recommendation? Then let me just ask the second one, so you put all together. The second one has to do with unjustified project legacy cost. In reviewing the accounts, it was realized that a total amount of 101.1 million Ghana cedis was deemed to be recorded on the books of ECG as legacy cost. And these arose from some unexplained costs that were recorded on the books of ECG. Now, this is what the recommendation, or this is the recommendation of the auditors. There was no, and I read in verbatim. "We reviewed the contract agreement between ECG and Huptel for provision of a digital payment platform service provided dated 20th March and noted that ECG was to pay Huptel a total amount of 101,105, oh, 101,105,243 Ghana cedis, 98% worth in respect of service fees for transactions processed from the 1st of November 2022 to the 31st of December 2023. However, management did not provide the basis of the amount owed and the details of the transactions from which the cost was derived. The above situation undermined transparency and could lead to payment for no work done and deprive the company the needed funds for other activities." The recommendation of the auditors, they recommended disallowance of the purported legacy debt of 101.1 million Ghana cedis. Madam Chair, Mr. Chair. These are the issues that ECG has to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we call commission is, is not really commission. It's the fee that ECG pays to Huptel for collecting, for the providing the payment platform for us to collect money. So customers want to buy electricity. They go, they use their mobile money, and they pay us through the Huptel platform, and it comes to us. So the fee for providing the service is what we, we are calling commission. Truly, it's not, it's not that Huptel collects the money for us and then we pay a commission or provide a service and we pay a commission. It's just the, the, the service fee. We have problems with working with this, with the directive, that it should be, they should settle us gross. And we have given this to our lawyers. In fact, we just engaged a lawyer to help us to review all our contracts, our major contracts. And Huptel contract is one of them, so that we can align all our contracts to applicable law. As I said, we've had problem because the PFM Act requires that we collect the money at gross and that Huptel settles us at gross. For Huptel to settle at us at gross, they will need to pay mobile money, the Momo fee that MTN or Stellisal will collect. What those who pay with Visa card, they will need to pay those people on our behalf and then give us an invoice, then we pay them before they go and pay the mobile money companies and the card providers. So it means that we will have to pay additional. But the Payment Services Act, which was passed in 2019, that is regulated by, by the Bank of Ghana, allows them to deduct the money as source. So we want to reconcile this together with our, our auditors. And we have engaged a lawyer to help us to do this. We want to be compliant with the law, and we have started that process. In terms of the legacy costs, we have engaged Huptel to provide us with the evidence. We've been working on this for some time. We only received the documents from them, the data from them yesterday. We have not reviewed it yet and to see that it is, it is accurate. We have not done that yet. Mr. Chair, I want to confirm here that we have not paid Huptel for this, this service. And we will not pay until we have reviewed it and are satisfied that they have earned this money.
But I mean, from, okay. Huptel issue is something that I've already referred to the Attorney General. So your lawyers, our auditors over here, when we get to court, then you guys resolve all those things. You see, you did it as single source. Was the board involved in approving this, this thing?
Yes.
If the board was involved, they will also be in court to explain why they approved this single source thing. The board should be added to it. When the Attorney General gets it, they will call the board also. So sir, this is out of our hands.
And, and I just want to add that we have negotiated the rate, the fee that we, Huptel charges for us. And we have reduced that from 3% to 1.6%.
Okay, sir.
We are still working to, to see whether we can have further gains.
Sir, the simple thing is, let's do the right thing. Some of us, when we get into office, we feel so big that we want to do whatever we want. Forget about the law. And then when there's a problem, then we don't, then we are caught with our shoes off. The next infraction is on paragraph 193, and Honorable Ella Plam would take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you please tell the committee and Ghanaians watching us how our taxpayers' money, worth 5,144,246, was used to purchase 6,096 units of prepaid meters that have been abandoned? Meanwhile, new meters continue to be procured and issued under the loss reduction program. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we started implementing the BXC project sometime in 2007, thereabouts. The meters we installed those days, we needed to keep spares for replacement. So these meters were spares that were kept so that if any customer reported a 40 meter, we could go in and replace them. Over the period, technology has changed. So we've moved now to new and better meters. And let me also say that the prepaid meters, ECG didn't start using prepaid meters till 2005, thereabout. So it was a new technology for us. So technology has moved on, and we've now, we are now using MMS meters. And those spares we kept, apparently we kept too many of them, so we have not used them. We have received a report, we commissioned an evaluation of the stock. And the conclusion is that they are obsolete and we should not use them, and we cannot use them.
Mr. Chair, can you bring the corporates to book? Because they have caused financial loss to the states. So if you can add their names to the Attorney General. Thank you.
So the 5.1 million Ghana cedis meters that you purchased is obsolete now?
Mr. Chair, it was not 5.1 that we purchased. We purchased a lot, and we installed a lot, the majority of them. These were spares, additional meters. So the value was much more than this, but they were used.
They were used.
Yes, they were used.
Now, if these ones are obsolete, does it mean that the ones that you gave to customers are also obsolete?
Yes, and we are replacing them.
And you are replacing them?
Yes.
Would there be any cost to the customer?
No, when we replace an existing meter, we don't charge anything to the customer.
Sir, I wish, I wish you could have something called secret shoppers. I wish you could have something called secret shoppers. If you could disguise yourself to go to ECG and tell them you need a meter, you will find out whether they are charging them or not charging them. The next infraction is on paragraph 198, and Honorable Enem would take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. This infraction is quite similar to the procurement breaches we've been looking at. So this had to do with the payment of additional cost for items procured. And it's to the tune of 17,927 US dollars. The auditors in their review of some purchase orders realized that ECG made a payment of 30,730,260 US dollars to various local suppliers for items which could have been purchased or procured from the original manufacturers at a cost of 13,637,983 US dollars. The interesting part of it is that when these items arrived, ECG themselves had to now pay for duties and demurrage after paying these monies to these local suppliers. And it's quite interesting, it's a tall list of local companies. And here, the auditors tried to do an analysis of how much it would have cost us if we had bought from the original source, whereas ECG decided to pay to these local contractors. And for some of them, Mr. Chair, it's quite interesting that for something that we could have purchased for just 643,000 US dollars, we purchased from a local supplier for 2,073. That's the additional cost alone is 1,430,000. For another item which we could have purchased for 1.4 million, we purchased from a local supplier 3.7 million, additional cost of 2,211,000, and a number of them. So the auditor's recommendation was in twofolds. One, that going forward, ECG deals directly with these original manufacturers. And the second one is to apply the sanctions per session 92 of the Public Procurement Act. ECG, first, I would like to find out what you have done on the first recommendation. And two, steps you have taken on the second recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that this happened because we, most of these things were so sourced. And we have changed from that. We are not, we, we are applying the Public Procurement Act. We have started competitive procurement. I must say, though, that not every manufacturer of the materials and equipment we used is interested in supplying directly to us. We have suppliers here who reach out to them and take on the risk of doing business in Ghana. And, 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 and so not everyone wants, manufacturer wants to supply to us. The key to that is competitive procurement. Now, when you advertise the opportunity, if the manufacturer is interested, they will participate in a bid. If a supplier wants to be a middleman and is interested, they will also participate in a bid. But at the end of the day, you get the best price out of the competition, and that's what we've decided to do. And if you've been monitoring the, the newspapers, we've advertised some of the opportunities in the newspapers. So it's competitive procurement using the Public Procurement Act.
Mr. MD, before maybe you go to the second, how you've dealt with the second recommendation, I want to understand something here. Do you know the rationale behind ECG themselves paying the duties and the demurrage for these items when we could have gone there ourselves to purchase? But now we give it to a local contractor who, in practice, should just deliver to ECG office. But now we pay duty and demurrage on these same items. And can you also tell the committee how much duty was paid for all these items?
Mr. Chair, when you procure items, the price you pay depends on the risk that you are passing on to the supplier or the manufacturer. So is, the price is a measure of risk allocation. And when you are importing goods, you have the income terms that define how much risk is passed on to the supplier and therefore what the responsibility of the supplier is. When, the more risk you pass on, the higher the price. So ECG, because we are big and we import a lot of things, we have a shipping department that is, that is, is, is licensed to clear goods. So we can do that ourselves because we are big and we import a lot of things. So we try to reduce the price by taking on the, some of the responsibilities.
MD, I wanted to stop there. So we are looking at the risk in ECG procuring directly from the original suppliers as against us procuring from a local manufacturer. But here, we are looking at the additional cost. Can we say that 1.1430,400, which was an additional cost per one of the orders, was the risk we're paying for? And then we now go ahead and pay for duty and demurrage on these same items? So if we are looking at cost basis, something we could have gotten 643,000, we decide to buy 2,073,000, and we still go ahead and pay duties, clear them. And this is still a cost-effective way of procuring items?
Mr. Chair, I, no, I did not justify the price. I, I tried to explain why sometimes. I, I tried to explain why sometimes we choose to clear the goods ourselves. But the price matter, I dealt with it in terms of competitive procurement.
Thank you, MD. So MD, my last question would be, what have you dealt, how have you dealt with these officers that were involved per section ninety-two of the Procurement Act?
Mister Chair, most of the officers are no longer with us, so we will depend on your guidance here.
Okay, Chair, I think we are in your hands now.
Thank you very much, sir. If you read paragraph two oh one of this offense, the auditors are saying that the above situation resulted in a loss of seventeen million US dollars, which could have been used to offset power producers' liability under the cash waterfall mechanism. The seventeen million was excess that we paid. Now, the auditor's recommendation, we recommend to management of ECG to deal directly with the original manufacturers, local and foreign, and discuss from splitting procurement orders to local suppliers to safeguard the financial resources of the state. We further recommended that the officers whose actions or inactions cause the infraction should be sanctioned in accordance with section ninety-two of the Public Procurement Act. Now, just to let you know, I have a copy of the Public Procurement Act. So the offenses relating to procurement. One, any person who contravenes any provision of this act commits an offense. And where no penalty has been provided for the offense, the person is liable on summary conviction to a fine not exceeding thousand penalty units or a term of imprisonment not exceeding five years or both. Auditors, what is a penalty unit? How much is a penalty unit? I think probably-
Honorable Chair, the, I think the last time I checked, I have to be sure, but I think it was twelve, twelve CDs.
Twelve CDs.
So when you multiply it.
Okay. So without, okay, thank you very much. So a thousand penalty unit. Two, the following shall be, shall also constitute offenses under this act. Entering or attempting, attempting to enter into a conclusive agreement, whether enforceable or not, with any other supplier or contractor where the prices quoted in their respective tenders, proposals or quotations are or would be higher than would have been the case, has there not been collusion between the persons concerned? B, directly or indirectly influencing in any manner or attempting to influence in any manner the procurement process to obtain an unfair advantage in the award of the procurement contract? C, altering any procurement document with intent to influence the outcome of a tender process, and this includes but is not limited to, A, forged arithmetic correction, or B, insertion of documents such as base security or tax clearance certificate which were not submitted at bid opening? And D, request for clarification in a manner not permitted under this act? We are working with Auditor General and they have recommended we sanction you under section ninety-two. So this case also goes to the Attorney General for prosecution. ECG, you are setting a record over here. You see, management response at the time of audit was, management responded that they would consider the recommendations to deal directly with foreign manufacturers. Does it take an auditor to come and tell you that, hey, do it this way before you do it that way? I bet if you gave your money to somebody in your office, go and buy me a watchi, you gave the person twenty CDs and the person came back and said, I couldn't buy a watchi because it was too expensive. You would sit down and ask the person, hey, how much was a fish? How much was a wole? How much was a egg? Before you give an additional money. But I buy a sikka, seventeen million dollars, so you go to court. The next infraction is on paragraph two oh four. And Honorable Degrav Pato will take that, that one.
Thank you, Chair. MD, this infraction is about an abandoned renovation project that from September twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen to May twenty eighteen, which is eight month duration, that that project should have been completed. A renovation work at Tema Regional Office, which was awarded to Premier Innovative Limited. And the total sum cost one million four hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-five. And then one million two hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven was the total amount accrued. And then out of this, one million one hundred and fourteen thousand Cedis were paid to the contractor. As at the time of the audit, the project has not been completed. And so the auditors recommended that you put expedite action to make sure that this project is completed for you. So I want to know, how far have you done with this? And number two, has the project been completed and put to proper use? Thank you.
Mister Chair, I'm sorry to say that the project has not yet been completed. The project delayed essentially because they were working while we still needed the office. So it slowed down the work and prices escalated and the contractor couldn't do the work. We have repackaged the, the project and we are about to award it to a contractor to, to complete.
Chair, if I heard him right, he told the committee that the project has been repackaged and then will be re-awarded to the same contractor or a different contractor. And after repackaging, how much was the cost as at now?
So we had a tender, we, we had a tender among five contractors to do it. So it was not the same contractor that won the, the project. But they could not be awarded before we came in, the new management came in. And we think that we should go by the Public Procurement Act to now do public procurement, competitive procurement, repackage it and, and send. So we, we started that process. The estimated cost now is about five point four million Ghana Cedis.
Chair, this is something, one point four million now to five point, I, I leave it to you.
Yeah, so the original contra was one point four million, you paid one point one out of it. And then they revised it to two point four million. And so it's now it's five point four million. But the work was seventy-five percent complete, completed at that time.
Mister Chair, when we went in, we realized that some of the work that had been done has deteriorated further. The building has deteriorated further. This was six years ago and you're not using the facility, it deteriorates. So that's, that's the tragedy.
What was the main reason for the contractor not completing it? What was the main reason? Or what, what is the real, real reason?
It's a combination of delays occasioned by, let me say, us and also by the contractor. Us because we didn't hand over a free building to the contractor. And then prices also escalated, so the contractor couldn't complete. They were at the price, at the current, the done price. So it's a combination of factors.
At the time of the contract, didn't you know that you had to leave the building alone for the contractor to do his work?
If we were doing that today, we would not do the same thing, we would not do it the same way.
I'm sorry?
Sir, if we are doing that work today, we will not do it the same way we did it six years ago.
So this time you kick everybody out of the building?
So what we've done is to move, right now, no one can use the building, so they are in the canteen.
Good.
So we need the building ASAP. And we will make provision for the, providing temporal containers for people to work while the building is free for the contractor to work.
Let me move to the next infraction, ECG. The, the next infraction is on paragraph two zero nine. And Honorable Clatus will take care of that one.
You, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction has to do with items purchased not accounted for to the tune of four million five hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and three Ghana Cedis. Chairman, items were purchased in the following offices, Accra East, Accra West, Ashanti West and Ashanti East, to the amount that I mentioned earlier. And these items could not be traced. We are talking, these items including vehicles and Samsung tablets, hundred of them. To the amount I mentioned, ECG failed, but failed to support the payment advice with store receipt advice. So you have the tables below. So what I want to ask is that, can you confirm? Because the auditors are saying that we could not ascertain the receipts, movement and the usage of the items. This indicates lack of transparency for utilization of the funds and could lead to inventory mismanagement. So the question I want to ask is, where are these items? Where are these items? That's my first question. And they also demanded distribution list. The auditors demanded distribution list for the hundred tablets procured.
Chair, at the time of the audit, these items were not passed through our store system. But subsequent to that, the items were passed through the store system and necessary documents have been famed up with it. Then as to where the materials are, for the materials originally were delivered directly to the USA units and that's why we had the challenge. So the materials were delivered to the units or persons that were going to use it.
Let me, ECG, when you, when we respond to infractions like this and the public are hearing, they, they will not take our serious. When we respond to infractions like this, you see, you, you procure items and the items came to the, your units and they were not recorded. So who received the items? When you procure items, it ended up, it is the stores, it ends up at the stores. So if the stores have not received the item, where, where were the items sitting? And the items, you said the items were with your offices at the various units and yet they were not in the hands of the stores. So where were these items at the time the audit was taking place? Where were the items? You see, you gave explanation, but I'm just worried that the public and all of us are not proud about the discussions around this platform. It's not good. When we, nobody will manage your own company like this, nobody, all of us here, nobody would do that. So, so let's, let's at least, so Chairman, that's why the last time Honorable Montaka came here, he said that he wished that those who usually take these actions should be someone, not my friend the MD who has just been appointed and is here answering all the questions, you know. So, so Chairman, I leave it to you, but I'm not impressed about the responses, particularly what the auditors have captured. It's bad. Everybody, we all know procurement, when you procure items, it ends up at the stores. And the auditors can testify that they were not in the store ledgers. The items were there, but they were not in the store ledgers. It means there was something fishy, there's something fishy. Otherwise, every item procured ends up at the stores. Thank you. Chairman, I leave it to you. But it's unfortunate my friend is on the horse seat, the former MD should have been here.
Have those items been identified now?
Auditors can confirm or otherwise.
Yeah.
Yes, and the list has been provided to the auditors.
Yeah, I need to find out from the auditors if what you are telling us is okay. Auditors, could you confirm please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, so subsequently, they provided the SRAs and the distribution list to attest to the fact that these items were received and duly distributed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next infraction is on paragraph two one five. And Honorable Frankie Abor will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. This borders on non-competitive procurement to the tune of two million Ghana Cedis. So I'm sure this one to be added to the list that we sent to the Attorney General. But my worry is that there seem to be some kind of outstanding misunderstanding between ECG and the auditors. ECG, the auditors are saying that ECG, you come under a public procurement authority and for that matter, you are under the Public Procurement Act, Act six, six three as amended. ECG is saying that they are, they are not under PP, PPA. So I just want to get understanding so that we know, moving forward, we know where we stand. So MD, what is the status now?
Mister Chair, there has been a lot of legal discussions around ECG's compliance with the PPA Act, whether ECG is covered by the Act or not. There has been some Supreme Court decisions cited and, and other appeal court decisions cited to support the contention that ECG is not covered, but only to the extent that it's using public funds. People have raised the questions, what is public funds? When we collect tariff, is it public funds? The issue is, we've passed that point because the minister and the board and management have all decided that we should use the Public Procurement Act. Unless there's a substantive decision, court decision on the ruling, we will comply with the Act. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, so uh is, the matter is settled for now. There's a test case, in the, in the earlier answer you gave in re- in respect of the abandoned project, you said that you are repackaging uh the project and awarded to uh a contractor who can do the work. You mentioned that five contractors were invited. So did you use the Public Procurement Act in this particular uh procurement?
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, the Public Procurement Act allows for restrictive tendering, but you need to, to seek permission, approval to engage in restrictive tendering, and we did not. So we ruled that we did not comply, and that's why we have decided to re-tender the work.
Have you done so far in respect of the re-tendering? I just want to test what you said in respect of you complying with the Act. So if the, what you're doing now is in compliance with the PPA or the Public Procurement Act, uh, Act six, six three, then we will know that you're complying, then that will be, then the case is closed. So what actually are you doing in respect of repackaging this particular uh contract?
Uh, Mister Chair, that tender was conducted and concluded in October twenty twenty four. Uh, the contract was not signed before we came in, and we decided we will not sign it. We've applied to the Public Procurement Authority. They will not give us any approval on anything yet until we receive the uh commitment authorization from the Finance Minister. We have applied for that um through the Ministry of Energy and Green Transition. They have forwarded that application to the Ministry, we are waiting for authorization.
Uh, well done, thank you. So finally, what was the content of the application you're seeking at PPA? Is it a restricted single source or what?
Uh, we have a number of uh requests that we sent to them in this.
Let's reduce ourselves to this particular one, yeah, I mean to just this one, not the rest.
For this particular one, we haven't sent any requests to them yet because the ones we sent earlier, they have told us they will not give us uh any approval until we have the procurement uh commitment authorization. So we've, we've held on.
So in, in fact, the abandoned project remains abandoned for now?
For now, today, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Um, ECG, the recommendation is that sanctions under section ninety-two of the Public Procurement Act two thousand and three, Act six, six three as amended, should be applied to the officers involved. We also recommended that management should always adhere to the provisions of the Procurement Act. And management's response was, yeah, we collect money from uh government, but hey, we are not, uh, we are on our own. I'm adding this one to Attorney General's cases, so clerk, keep uh add it to it and uh auditors, note, they are going to meet the Attorney General. And all those people who were involved, now when it gets to Attorney General, make sure that you get the list of those who were involved, and they will make sure they get them. If they are Ghanaians, we will get them. If we, if we've given them uh jobs before, we will get them. You can create all this mess over here and then ask us to pay additional uh tariffs, no way. When you have money, add it.
Uh, MD, this internally generated manual, the manual you've prepared internally, have you started using it or you haven't started?
It was approved last year by the Board.
Board, Board of ECG or PPA?
Sorry, ECG's Board, uh, because at the time, the contention was that we didn't, we were not covered by the Act. Uh, now that we've decided to go by the Act, our manual is irrelevant because the only uh document the Board of the, the Authority recognizes is the Act. So it's, the, the manual is, is no longer applicable.
So that's it? That's it, that's fine, thank you.
Chairman, uh, I just want to reiterate the point that there is a lot of rot in ECG. And then, uh, Managing Director and the Minister, what strategies or measures are you putting in place to curb this gargantuan rot and, uh, and instilling and corruption at the ECG? It is becoming too much, and the one public uh interest question. Uh, Ghanaians want me to ask you, the ECG boss, some private citizens have written to ECG demanding that the lands and houses of some of the sub-stations being relocated. Your sub-station need to be relocated, and this were a sub-station at the encampment, the Vanguard High Encampment. What are you doing about that? Are you relocating? What are you doing to protect those land? And also where is always Dumsor in Keta Enclave and, 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 and Denu area, everywhere?
Because he doesn't like you.
Every day, I have to be calling the Minister, there is Keta Enclave and Denu always light off. What is happening?
Uh, so, but, uh, Minister, is there confirmation that Dumsor is back? Is, is Dumsor back? Please?
Absolutely not.
That, that's quite worrying, I mean, the people of Keta cannot cater in other places, yes. That's, that's quite interesting.
Honorable Chair, absolutely, Dumsor, we don't have it, we don't even know what Dumsor is now as, as far as the Ministry of Energy and Green Transition is concerned. Keta Denu has some challenges, and uh one, they have some technical challenges with the lines, which the Minis- the Ministry has actually considered. It has to do with the, the network line to those areas. It is on the, uh, I'm not very technical, is it sixty-nine? Sixty-nine KVA, whilst now we've improved it to one hundred and sixty-one. So in their case, even when an issue happens and you go and improve the system with whichever means, the next day, you see that the, the problem has occurred again because once the system is improved, consumption within the area also goes up. So we have noted it and it's part of our, uh, programs or the project that we want to undertake within next year, where we are going to look at the, the transmission lines from the, uh, for the Eastern Corridor, which is part of it. So for now, we are only doing uh some remedial works, but the major work will be done within uh next year.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. Honorable Minister, well, it is not in Denu and what, uh, his place, Keta only. Consistently for about two months now. And you name, and it embarrass experience a lot of what you claim you haven't seen, the Dumsor. Consistently, every weekend when I go, I sleep in the dark. So Minister, this is something that you should look at. We, we don't want to do politics with it. This is an issue that needs to be addressed. Just last weekend, over the weekend, I was there, I was there on Friday, and usually it happens around ten PM, and then you sleep in the dark till um the next day. And it's not just Etewa East constituency, it happens in Fantiakwa South, it happens in Etewa West. So it is not an isolated case, it, it's, it's quite a number of the constituencies in the Buakua uh region. And I think you should look at that, we keep calling the Tafol Substation because we are told that is where we belong to, and a part of it also is in Nkoko, but consistently, sometimes it's a twenty-four hour thing. And so I believe that as we've had the opportunity to meet ECG and the Minister for Energy and Green Transition, we should make our case to you to see how best you can um solve this problem. Um, you claim it's something you haven't seen, it is not the Dumsor you have seen, and, but we think that it is that, uh, whatever you want to describe it, all we want is for you to see how best you can address this for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable, Honorable Chair, uh, Honorable Chair, we have noted that all the areas that have um those issues, um, ECG has taken notice. And Honorable Chair, you, you'd agree with me, um, I think this one, once you have brought to my attention, just as the other one brought to my attention and I, I made sure it was fully resolved, this one too, we'll make sure that we resolve it.
I must state that it is true, that the other time we're having some serious challenges with um the electricity in our district, Etewa East District Office. And I drew your attention to it, and you, you, you fixed it for us. So I believe that, uh, just as I have drawn your attention to these things in, in these three or four Ibuakua regions, you go ahead and do it again. A reset is changing everything, but I don't think that is what we are asking for. We are asking that you fix the problem. It's not about semantics, but it's about fixing the problem for us. You've done it before, and so I know you do it again. Thank you.
Yeah, madam, just to let you know, it's not Dumsor, it's Dumsia Cia.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, ECG MD, um, so with all the procurement issues that um we, we saw from your end, I, I need this clarification and um, and for the purposes of, for this committee's report and also for the general public. Haptel and their mobilization office at your end, has it helped?
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Chair. Um, ECG has moved um to cashless, and we will not go back. So the concept is, is a good one, and we should all support it. In fact, uh, because of that, most customers today, uh, in the comfort of their bedroom, two AM, you can buy your power, okay? And we are not going back, and we are deepening that, now moving, transforming our operations. We implementing an ERP that, you know, we've been talking about transparency, we are improving that. Internal transparency, the work, the way we work, we changing that, and it's because uh we are in the age of AI. We can use technology to improve how we work and to improve our accountability. So we are, we, we seriously pursuing that, so we are not going back to the old days.
Thank you for this honesty, and um I ask because uh this is an indigenous Ghanaian IT firm doing excellently well in the market. And um, uh, it's important that we try as much as possible to protect them. So once they are doing a good work, continue to refine what the services that they provide for you so that we can protect our own. Thank you very much. I haven't heard, I mean.
No, with a, with transformer?
Uh, where?
Oh, okay, with the, yes, yes, uh, but before then, with the Haptel issue, you know, the, the MD has indicated, the concept is good, it is just the process in which they were put on, uh, they were actually enrolled, which wasn't, uh, done right. But even with currently, their rates have been negotiated, and uh I think that if we should follow up with it, it will help us. Thank you.
Um, so we can have something that is good for us, but we can also question the price. Thank you.
The, the question about uh moving a transformer, yes?
The land, uh, sorry, um, so, Mister Chair, um, my Director of Operations just confirmed that it's come, it has come to our notice, so we will work on it. Uh, but let me also say that demand in Ghana is growing, and especially in Accra. And we will need land, and we need space to reinforce our network to supply every customer. We will need to put our equipment somewhere. So um we, we need to work with the public, or we will need the public to work with us so we can provide reliable, uh, consistent power to supply our industries and businesses, okay?
ECG, you are discharged.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, madam, uh, sir, hold on for a minute, there, there's uh another question that I, I missed.
Yeah, uh, a few months ago, uh, there was this issue in circulation alleging that about thousand three hundred plus containers containing cables were missing or were detected missing from your outfit. How true is that issue?
Um, Mister Chair, uh, I'm not sure that report is correct, um, not from our outfit. I think the Honorable Member is referring to the report that the committee set up by the Minister for Energy and Green Transition could not trace a certain number of containers, one thousand three hundred, not from our outfit, but from the ports. I just want to clarify that. And subsequent to that report, um, we have worked with the port authorities and with national security uh, and with the Ministry, uh, Ministry, and we have traced um other containers. And we have also um shared that report with the public, that all the containers have been traced. I gave an analogy the last time, and I will try to do that again. That if I put two thousand Ghana cedis on my wardrobe, and I, I, and I go out, and I come back and I, I find that it's only one thousand that is there, I would say that I'm missing one thousand Ghana cedis. But if my wife comes back home and said, oh, I took your money when I was going to the market, then I have found my one thousand that I said was missing. So we couldn't trace the, the containers, and later we set up a committee and we found the containers. Okay, so we didn't say it was stolen, we couldn't trace them. Thank you.
So the, the. I think this question, currently, there's a committee that is ensuring the evacuation of all the identified containers, and I happen to chair that committee. So we are in the process of evacuating the, the identified containers. The truth is that where the containers were to be located, which the committee reported as, cannot trace it. We, we've seen the some of the containers, but at different uh terminals. So just as you said, if the container was to be at maybe, uh, um, is it Avianso, and it is seen in a different terminal, we can at this point say that you have it missing. It's been found, but initially, when it was reported, they were not being located. But now, because they have to do another audit with the support of the Ghana Port and Harbour Authority, currently, we've been able to evacuate over a thousand um containers and its items, and we are still in the process of evacuating all of them. We are working with the Ministry of Finance, the um Ghana Port and Harbour Authority, the National Security, the National, the Police Service, and all other relevant agencies to make sure that those that we have, uh, and then ECG itself, those that we've identified, we should be able to send them to a location where, at the end of the day, we are yet to come out, officially we'll come out and with a report when we are done with evacuation. Thank you.
Please, what measure are you putting in place to ensure that this doesn't reoccur?
Thank you, Mister Chair. So the, the question was, why will we import things that we needed? And that things arrive at the ports and we will not clear them. We have changed that, so we, every month, we set money aside. We know the containers that we are expecting to arrive. We made provision, when they arrive, uh, within the fourteen days allowed, we take them out. We made provision, when they arrive, within the 14 days allowed, we take them out. That's what we're doing now. Every month, we don't have a lot of money, we're cash strapped, but it's cheaper for us to borrow money to clear the goods than leave them at the port. The dammerage is much higher than the interest we will pay. Thank you.
In addition, the Ministry have also applied that ECG should only order for items that they need. In the past, we realized that they were over procurement and some of the items that they procured, at that point, was not needed. So they also didn't see the need to immediately even evacuate them from the port. So now it is need based. You only order for what you need. And with the Ministry of Finance, is it commitment, authorization, I think that is also going to help to check the procurement processes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Minister, you and your team, you are discharged.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're calling Bui Power. Uh, Minister, you are not discharged, it's ECG. Okay, now Bui Power. Okay, Bui Power, could you introduce yourself to the committee, please? We are still live on television, so please.
I am Engineer Kowedu Akosam, the acting CEO of Bui Power Authority.
My name is Eric Sam, I'm the finance director.
My name is Franklin Nana Adai, head of legal.
I am Harrison Kwaku Edifo, Deputy Director of Finance.
My name is Victoria Tabika, Head of Internal Audit.
Okay, Bui, uh, Bui Power would start your infractions on paragraph 332, and Honorable Bauer will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bui Power, your infraction relates to overdue power generation bills and the amount is frightening, 729 million, 776,253 United States Dollars. And the auditors noted that you supply power to ECG and the amount that the ECG is supposed to pay the Bui Power Authority, in terms of your receivables, consistently, every year they reduce the amount of money that they are supposed to pay. And per the agreement, they are required to pay those to Bui Power, at least. And in 2020, for instance, they paid 57% of their invoice amount. They decreased this in 2021 to 34%. And then in 2022, they further came down to 23%. So it means that every year, they were just coming down. And as of now, they owe you a total amount of 729.7 million US Dollars. So the auditor's recommendation is that you should liaise with the Ministry of Finance and the Ministry of Energy and management of ECG to ensure that the payments are made to significantly reduce the long overdue receivables from ECG. Can you walk us through the actions that you've taken with respect to this recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Consistently, we've been engaging the Ministry of Energy, the Ministry of Finance and also the Cash Waterfall Mechanism Team, those responsible for the Cash Waterfall Mechanism. But as has been explained today, sometimes as an organization, you have little control over this. But the good news is that, as we speak, Cash Waterfall Collection has improved, said that this year we are recording an average of about 51, 53%. So that is the situation today. So we hope that the economy will be good and we will keep receiving better receipts from ECG. So that's where we are. Thank you.
I keep wondering, ECG, they've left the seat, they should have been here to answer this question. I mean, because if you repay the Cash Waterfall Mechanism, you are supposed, at least there is a reminder that, and you are supposed to pay a certain percentage. And consistently, every year you come down, meanwhile, you are selling the power. So it's a problem. So for now, um, has there been, is there any arrangements that you have, for these years they have paid? What of the areas? The areas were 729.7 USD, you know? How are you getting that money?
I think somewhere last year, an arrangement was made for the Ministry of Finance to pay for certain projects we undertook. And the idea is that in a later time, it will be offset against each ECG's indebtedness to us. So a little bit has been done, but we still have that large areas with them.
So far, the projects that you undertook, how much are you paying for out of this overdue receivables?
I'll let my Director of Finance come in here.
So far, the Ministry of Finance has paid a total of 450 million USD on our behalf. And this is not in connection to only projects, it is also in relation to some other loan obligations that we are not able to pay because of the reduction from ECG receipts.
Have you brought this to the attention of the auditors?
Yes, the auditors are perfectly aware of the payment that are made on our behalf by the Ministry of Finance.
Auditors, can you confirm this?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
Chairman, I think that should be all for me. I think there is now, it should be a little over 300.
Lift. All right, thank you. I bet when ECG was here, you heard what they'd be using the money for on our water, Cash Waterfall. The next infraction is on paragraph 341, and Honorable Shalee Chair will take care of that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This infraction is to do with the BPA school. So the auditors noted that you were not keeping a separate account for your school at your BUI generating site and that all the monies were lumped up in your one account. They recommended that you set up a different account for ease of reconciliation and for the operation of the school. I would like to know if you've done this and if so, when?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a board resolution that will be made in the next board meeting to give a resolution to the bank to go ahead with the accounts. So that is ongoing. That's the status.
I think this was done in 2023, right? This recommendation?
Yes, so it's been outstanding, but currently it's been...
Yes, yeah, in 2025, November.
Yes.
Is there a reason why it's delayed till this time?
Honorable Chair, it actually went to the previous board, but they didn't have the opportunity to approve before they exited. So now, it is, the next board meeting, it's been, it will be tailored, it's part of the agenda and then it will be approved.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to leave it in your hands as to the timelines you would give them to report back to the committee on the progress of this. Thank you.
Thank you. What you said was you were going to get permission from the board to open the account. Is that what you said?
Yes, previously, yes.
So you haven't opened the account?
That account has not been opened. But the new board, there's a resolution going to the new board to open the account.
What kind of resolution? Now, do you know they have to go to Control and Accountant General? Through Ministry of Finance, they get the account opened? All you guys didn't know that?
Honorable Chair, the bank is saying that they need a board resolution before they can open the account.
It's Controller and Accountant General who will open the account for you.
Well noted, Honorable.
Because you can't just go and open the account. Otherwise, you open the account in your own name, but you need to go to Control and Accountant General. Because if the board gives you permission, you still can't set it up. Auditors will get you for it, because you have to go through Control and Accountant General. Okay, you, let me reserve my comment. The next one is on, the next infraction is on paragraph 346, penalty on default of biased credit loan of 846,785 US Dollars. We recommended that management should ensure funds are made available through budget allocation to honor the authority's loan obligations. Management response was, management will continue to engage with the Ministry of Finance on this matter to ensure their standing low obligations are settled. What has happened to this payment?
We still have outstanding obligations to be settled and currently the loan is being restructured by the Ministry of Finance. And as Cash Waterfall improves, I mean, we have a budgetary allocation, but with the improvement of Cash Waterfall, we should be able to pay some of these outstanding loans per the newly structured loan.
This was supposed to have been done in May and November of 2023. And the loan is being restructured?
No, as of 2023, the loan had not been restructured, but it was difficult for BUI Power to pay because Cash Waterfall inflows wasn't too good for BUI Power. But the current situation is that Ministry of Finance is restructuring the loan and BUI Power has also made a budgetary provision to pay the loan under the restructured loan.
What do you mean by they are restructuring the loan?
The loan payment was supposed to end in the year 2027, but as of, let's say, middle of this year, there was an outstanding of about 500 million, yes, about 500 million plus, yes. So Exim Bank of China agreed with Ministry of Finance to extend it by another 15 years. But we are yet to get a feedback on the actual amount to be paid, but we have made a projection from the outstanding that we will set aside about 30 million dollars every year to pay. But we are yet to get the actual amount that will be amortized for payment subsequently.
Now, Minister of Finance, we'll have to bring you to Parliament.
Possibly so.
Anyway, that's not your issue. Okay. Hmm, the next infraction is on paragraph 351, and Honorable Ahinkwa will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this is about livelihood enhancement program. The BUI activities affected 816 people. And then per their act, they are supposed to settle those affected persons. And according to the auditors, 660 have been settled and we're given some livelihood enhancement benefits. But out of that, they have 156 persons remaining that have not been sorted. So the auditors identify this and ask them to do the need for. But my question is, what informed that decision? 660 out of the 816 have been settled and given all their packages in terms of enhancement, why the others?
Mr. Chairman, I'll let my Director Legal take that.
Mr. Chairman, this is a process. So it's a livelihood enhancement program. So it's a process that we are rolling out. So that was the first set of people, that's the project affected persons who were catered for. Just quite recently, we have rolled out another package. And we believe that, I mean, with time, we'll be able to cater for all the project affected persons under the LEAP program.
Have you faced some kind of agitations from those that have not been given?
Mr. Chairman, not really. We have a very strong community relations team that continuously interferes with this project affected persons so that immediately there are any issues, they are able to bring it to the attention of management for resolution.
But in terms of settlement, they've all been settled?
Mr. Chairman, very well so, they've all been settled.
Then I think you have to speed up whatever that you are doing so that they will also have their share and then stay peacefully. It was relocating somebody from his comfort zone, no matter how dilapidated the structure he's inhabiting is, he feels comfortable. Once you move the person, it brings some kind of inconvenience and whatever. So I'll plead with you to speed up your actions so that they can also be sorted, okay? Thank you.
Sir, when it comes to livelihood enhancement, all people who have been displaced, that 156 people who are quiet, don't take them for granted. Because when they've seen other people get their packages and they haven't gotten theirs, I still pray that they will have some patience, but don't take them for granted. Hurry up and give them what they have to get. I know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, madam. Okay, Honorable Minister, we are done with BUI Power. Is Valco Trust Fund around? Any other people?
Valco Trust Fund is here.
Okay. Okay, so then they should come then. Could you please introduce yourselves to the committee?
Mister Chair, my name is Ajol Paribiamafu, Head of Administration.
I'm Sapun Jay. Mister Chair, I'm Sapun James, Head of Accounts and Finance.
Mohammed Gazera Abubaka, Acting Executive Director, Valko Trust Fund.
Thank you very much for coming. Um, your infraction starts on paragraph two eighty. And Honorable Hethoja would take care of that one.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, this has to do with unremitted taxes to the tune of hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred. Uh, the details have been outlined here. But when the auditors contacted management, the accountant explained that the projects were ongoing. And management decided to use the unremitted withholding taxes of one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine point nine-two to support the payment of the projects. But the auditors didn't take it kindly with you. So they recommended that you must make sure that money was paid to G R A and evidence of payment soon accordingly. Have you done that?
Yes, Mister Chairman. A total of eighty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine Ghana cedis has been paid. And there are plans underway by the end of the year. The, uh, fund will complete the, uh, payment of that.
Uh, auditors, is it true that they've made such a payment?
Honorable Chair, per our last verification, they had paid thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight point two-six with a remaining balance of hundred and five thousand and one cedis point seven-four.
Mister Chief Executive. Mister Chief Executive.
Yes, Mister Chair.
Have, have you seen where the problem is? You indicated that you paid eighty-five thousand, but the auditors are saying that you paid only thirty-six thousand, left with over a hundred thousand to pay. Are, are, are you, are you in line with the auditors or you still maintain that you paid such a money?
We have the receipts here that will be, uh, tendered into the auditors for confirmation.
Do, do you still have the receipt with you now as you speak?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Because I took. It mean that you made an earlier payment of thirty-six thousand and after that you did others?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
What prevented you from issuing that receipt or giving that receipt to the auditors in the first place?
As at the time, that payment was not made. But later July this year, we started making the subsequent payments to make up to this eighty.
So my question is, in the, in the past, the payment was not made, agreed. Now that you have made the effort, why haven't you handed over the receipt to the auditors as demanded?
Mister Chair. It is something that was inherited and based on the auditors' advice. That was when we took these plans to clear this payment. And we were not able to tender it to the auditors before coming to this committee. And with the, uh, permission of the committee and Mister Chairman, we'll do that after this, uh, meeting.
Oh, so it means that you don't have it here?
I have the receipts here, but because we are in process of.
Once you have it, give it to them straight away. Do that to confirm that you have paid eighty-five thousand. Mister Chairman, they are in the process of, uh, tendering the receipt in evidence.
Uh, you are the chief executive, right?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, you can decide on when you want to pay, uh, the unremitted taxes. You have fifteen days. Do you get paid through consolidated funds?
No, Mister Chairman.
Uh, so that's, so those of us who get paid through consolidated funds, we need to wait till December for you to pay before we get paid. No, sir. You have fifteen days to pay the rest of the amount. The next infraction is on.
Noted, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. The next infraction is on paragraph two A six. And Honorable Shelly Chair will take care of that.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Um, this is to do with the outstanding staffing indebtedness to the tune of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven. So six employees of the fund owe you guys fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-six. When the auditors raised this, um, and this dates back to twenty twenty-one. And let's just keep in mind that this is a twenty twenty-three report. So what I know is there should have been a way of these employees paying that amount that they owe the fund within a year. But as of twenty twenty-three, they had not paid. What is alarming is the management's response that you gave. You gave a response that in the case of Jo- Josephine McLomote and John Oforimante, um, they were awaiting judgment with the National Labour Commission with regards to their redundancy and then deductions will be made from that. Then next is Evans Kankam, who is apparently currently standing trial at the Accra Superior Court for a crime of stealing and forgery of signature. And the fund shall recover the amount. I don't know how we got this, like, you, it, this was undetected. I don't know what due diligence you did for someone to be forging people's signatures. I would like you to throw more light on these. And finally, you, Dorothy Etiamensa is also suing you guys for, um, unfair dismissal, so you are unable to recover the fund. With these four people, you've left out Elizabeth Simpson, who is owing you twenty-two thousand. She's owing the most. Management didn't comment on her indebtedness. Neither did management comment on Maxwell Boa Bean's indebtedness of over nine thousand Ghana cedis. Can you please tell the committee the responses that you gave with regards to the four employees? Can you give us an update on it? And the two that you didn't respond on, can you inform the committee on what you've done about them? Thank you.
Mister Chairman, thank you very much. Concerning the employees, Josephine McLomote and Joseph Mante, upon the resurishing from the National Labour Commission, the amount was withheld when their benefit. Uh, the amount, the amount was withheld when we were paying their redundancy package. So that one, Josephine McLomote and Ju- Joseph Oforimante, John Oforimante, sorry, amount has been paid. Concerning Mister Boa Bean, it was a system error. When they, when he was going on retirement, the amount was withheld from his provident fund. But the amount wasn't captured when they were doing the entries. So upon revisiting his redundancy package payment schedule, we found it out that the amount was withheld. So we have done the rightful deductions. But upon the three employees, their case is still pending, so decision hasn't been taken over them. Thank you, Mister Chair.
When you say, um, the amount has been returned, um, what, have you informed the auditors?
Mister Chair, no. So you asked your indulgence to tender it in evidence. Thank you.
And the other two, you said they've also, you've deducted the full amount for them. Are the auditors aware?
Mister Chair, no. So that one to also be tended in evidence for them.
So I asked a question about what due diligence you did with Evans Kankam for him to have been forging signatures and stuff before his employment. I mean, um, can you throw more light on how we got ourselves into this?
Mister Chair, uh, Evans Kankam was employed by the previous, uh, E D. And I think that issue was, um, also committed under the same, uh, leadership. And he was the very person that reported the case to court. I can't really tell the due diligence what, what, that was done before Evans Kankam was employed. But currently, we are following the case clearly at the court to see whatever the, uh, ruling will be.
Elizabeth Simpson, you didn't comment on her. You still haven't given me any response with regards to her twenty-two thousand indebtedness.
Mister Chair, thank you very much. Concerning Elizabeth Simpson's upon the drawing of our attention from the auditors, we wrote to her, confirmed, for her to confirm that what they are saying was true. Upon the feedback we received from her, it means that there has been some conflicting uh, issues because he, he is indicating that at the time he was going on retirement, she has already settled the amount, the, the amount in question. So upon the computation of the provident and other benefits, she showed up. It was true that such provisions wasn't made when they were doing the payment. So we are still going through records to find out that whether it's a system error, she paid and it wasn't deducted or whether what she is saying is true. So we are in, on it.
This dates back twenty twenty-one. This is a twenty twenty-three auditor's report. We are in twenty twenty-five. So how long, how much longer do you guys need to bring closure to this?
Mister Chair, I can assure the committee that before the, uh, next, uh, before the end of the year, we'll be able to conclude on this.
Honorable Chair. I.
Uh, with regards to the fraud and then the falsification of signatures, those involved, we will make to know that their, their issue is pending before court. And here the auditors are saying the monies involved should be recouped. So in case they comply and then pay the monies, what will happen to the issues that are before court?
Now, the case is between the state and the individuals. So it is the state that will determine whatever the case will end.
Okay, Minister. Now finally, you are discharged. And, uh, the fund is also discharged. Thank you very much for appearing before us.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Um, we thank you.
Honorable Minister, on behalf of the, um, the committee and its members and the secretaries, we are very, very grateful to you for attending upon us. I mean, it's been a long, um, journey with us today. But, um, thank you for sitting through to the end. And we hope that all the commitments that the various, um, public boards and institutions made here uh, will be carried through to the end. Uh, so that at least we can get, um, value for money and also the efficient utilization of our public finances. So thank you very much, Minister. Members, tomorrow, uh, we have Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources. Under that, you have G I D E C and the Office, Office of the Administrator of Stoollands and Forestry Commission, Lands Commission and Minerals Commission. We also have Ministry of Food and Agri. Under Ministry of Food and Agri, we have Ghana Cocoa Board, Greens and Legumes Development Board, the Ghana, and the Ghana Irrigation Development Authority. We have Ministry of Finance. Under that, it's Siga Minerals Income Investment Fund, N D P C, National Insurance Commission, Venture Capital, National Low-Tree, Low-Tree Authority, GIF, Internal Audit Agency, F I C and F I C, yes. And we also have Ministry of Roots and Highways. Ministry of Transports, which is the Volta Lake Transport Company and Ghana Railway Development Authority. So on this note, we'd like to bring our meeting to an end and thank you so much, the auditors, the secretaries and members of the Public Accounts Committee. Thank you. Obviously, the media, without you, people can't see and appreciate what we do. So thank you so much. We are in this with you.
I cannot tell how long the bill will be in this house. Okay? Now, I took a position. I took a position that once the bill was transmitted to the presidency, then it was within the bosom of the presidency to.